Okay, I'd like to reconvene the June 28, 2011, meeting of the Newport Beach City Council. Do we have a closed session report?
We do, Mr. Mayor. The City Council met in closed session to consider those matters reflected on its open session agenda as Roman numeral two. There are reportable actions, I will list them. As to Bernard versus Newport Beach, the City Council, well, Bernard versus Newport Beach and Mathias versus Newport Beach, the City Council authorized the defense of those matters by a vote of seven to zero. As to the matter nine versus Newport Beach, the City Council authorized the defense of that matter by a vote of six to zero, Councilmember Curry recusing himself since he's a member of the Harbor Ridge Master Homeowners Association. Then with respect to the evaluation of a public employee, that being the city attorney, the City Council approved and authorized the mayor to execute a mutual separation agreement with the city attorney. The vote was seven to zero. The agreement is to provide that the city attorney is mutually separating amicably with the city of Newport Beach, that he will assist the city in transitioning, that he will stay until the time his successor is appointed and is seated, or till September 23rd, whichever is the sooner, and that this mutual agreement will work out with the city and there's the three months severance paid pursuant to his contract will be paid. Mr. Mayor, may I address that?
Yes.
Thank you. For the benefit of the audience and for the folks at the city, I have served as the city attorney for two and a half years, and this has been a really fruitful and enjoyable time of my life as a lawyer. You have one very fine city council. I've worked for a number of cities, this is my third city as city attorney. You have probably the most intelligent and well-working council I've ever had the pleasure of working with, so I commend them to you and I commend the council. They've made a choice however, to create the office and go in a different direction. Their direction's a perfectly valid choice and a valid way of providing the services for law firms and legal services the city wishes to have or needs to have. It's simply not a model I care to execute. I'm a lawyer, I'm a lawyer first, it's probably one of my strengths and one of my greatest weaknesses, and I would prefer to just move on in my, back into the private practice of law, continuing to serve cities and other, those other folks who would like my services. So it's with, you know, a mixture of sadness and pleasure looking forward into the future that I announce that I have agreed with the City Council that I will leave my position as the city attorney, and although I will assist the city in transitioning to the new city attorney, whomever that individual may be.
Thank you, David. It's with the same mixture of feelings that on behalf of council, I would like to thank you for your service over the last two and a half years. You've accomplished a great many things for the benefit of our city. I'd like to emphasize the amicable nature of these discussions, these very recent discussions about your separation, and more than the amicable nature of them, thank you for your professionalism throughout your tenure here as the city attorney, but most especially in the most recent time period here with regard to these separation discussions. It's, we're thankful that you are holding yourself out to work for the city, with the city in a transition period until we can name a successor, and as you know, we intend to move forward as rapidly as possible to do that. I do want to make sure that everyone understands that this is a decision amongst reasonable people, and that this decision should not reflect in any way negative with regard to the work of the office of the city attorney or the people working in that office, and I know you've been very supportive and very, and have thought very well of them, as have we, and so I want to thank you for your service to the city and wish you the very best, even though you'll still be sitting here for a little while yet. So, thank you, David. All right. With that, may we have the roll call?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. And we will now do the pledge of allegiance, and following that, the invocation by Mr. Reverend Robert Jordan Ross of the Newport Universalist Society.
Please follow me in the salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
O Lord of life, teach us gratitude for all that we have, and if what we have to work with is less than we would wish, teach us thankfulness in having even this much. O Lord of love, teach us compassion toward those for whom the present days are difficult, and if they feel unwanted because of their difficulties, teach us to value them nonetheless. O Lord of wisdom, teach us cleverness, to plan for our common future with new workable alternatives, and if even those alternatives become impossible, teach us to realize that yet greater things are waiting for us to discover them. Lord of time, teach us patience and forbearance, and if the time for our ideas and plans is pushed too far into the future for us to use them, teach us to mentor and train new leadership in our city, leadership that will in future days lift up and fulfill these plans of ours. Teach us, O Lord of common grace, to use our power wisely and well, and if our power fails, teach us to regain and renew it. So keep us, Lord, centered on your kingdom, focused in your work, learning of your truth and serving those you love. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Well, it's a bit unusual, but we have no presentations this evening, so we'll proceed to the notice for public.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cellphones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
All right, I'll start to my right this evening. Councilmember Hill?
I do, Mr. Mayor. It was called to my attention over the last couple of weeks that in the passing of the revised zoning code, under the belief that we were not taking existing properties and throwing them into areas of non-conformance, there have been individuals on the peninsula that own parking lots, that have received a notice from the city that because of the new zoning code, they now need to come in and apply for a new minor use permit at the cost of $1,936, and new conditions being placed on their property. I would like to have staff look into that and determine what the makeup of that is, and also identify if there are any other items that are located in that zoning code revision that are causing existing properties to become non-conforming.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosansky.
Yes, I have an announcement. As many of you may know, we recently transitioned our animal shelter from the facility on Newport Boulevard and 22nd Street in Costa Mesa to the Orange County Humane Society, which is located at 21632 Newland Street in Huntington Beach. And as part of that transition, the Humane Society there wants to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony, so we're going to be doing that on July 23rd. In addition to the ribbon-cutting, there'll be food, there'll be some, not vendors, but people there, you know, we'll be having an adoption fair.
Pick a pet?
We'll be filming pick a pet? Yes, we will. That will be our, we're calling it our Jogus show, July and August show. But we will be filming, so if you want to bring your pet down and get on TV, that may happen as well. But we just, or I want to highlight the fact that we have moved the shelter, and so if you are looking for your pet, it's going to be up there on Newland Street. If you're not familiar with the exact location of the shelter, it's located on Newland, just north of Coast Highway, behind the big power plant there, so you really can't miss it if you drive past the power plant. In any event, and if you're just looking to adopt an animal, certainly they have those there too, we share the shelter currently with Costa Mesa and Westminster, and so there's a number of animals there, even if you don't find an animal that was picked up in Newport Beach, you may find a different one there. So please mark it on your calendar for 9:00 AM on July 23rd. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Gardner?
The Little League All-Stars 12 and unders has started this week, and my grandsons play for Laguna Beach. They played in Newport Beach, the two different teams in Newport Beach, and lost twice. So it doesn't suggest much of a freeway series, but I do want to pass on that all the Laguna parents, they were played here, up at the Lincoln Field, and all of the Laguna Beach parents were so impressed with the condition of our field, so kudos to staff and also to Little League people who contribute so much. Secondly, at study session, an issue was raised about the Fourth of July and the fact that the city contributes money for the fireworks, but this may be in conflict with a policy, which is that you can't charge money if we're doing it.
We have news on that, if you'd like.
Okay, all right, good.
That came about from a Dunes flyer, and I let Andy Theodoro of the Dunes know that that's not legal, and he said, "Fine, we'll take care of it."
Oh, well, that was easy.
Yeah, so the question too is if you come earlier in the day, like for a pie-eating contest, it's a whole day, I don't think that's covered by the policy, but if you're coming for the fireworks later in the evening, your Newport Beach residents won't be charged.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moser.
Okay, Councilmember Daigle?
Yes, speaking of improvements, for those of you that travel Jamboree Road, it's a very frequently traveled road, and there's a bridge just before you get to Bristol if you have to get on the 73. The city is going to be improving that bridge substantially, we're going to be adding a fourth lane, and so if you have three lanes and go to four, then we will be able to accommodate up to 25% more traffic over the same time. So we're trying to always continue to improve our traffic flow, and that project is going to go a long ways to doing that. And also, the entity that is paying for those improvements is the city of Irvine, and you probably wondered some years back when there was high-rise condos going up and the impacts to Newport Beach, and so we were able to negotiate a settlement of over $3.5 million so that they would cover the cost of that improvement. So very pleased, this is a long-anticipated improvement for our roadways, that it will be underway, and our public works staff is going to be managing it to really eliminate, to reduce the disruption to motorists, so thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Curry?
On June 15th, the Government Finance Officers Association awarded the city of Newport Beach its certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. This is an award that the city receives every year for the past foreseeable past. The award is given as the highest form of recognition in the area of government accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. They go on to note that the financial report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, including demonstrating constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. So congratulations to the Department of Finance for once again achieving excellence in our financial reporting. I would also note that this Saturday, I was privileged to participate in one of the programs sponsored by the Arts Foundation, the Art in the Park, up at Mariners Park, and also by our Arts Commission, the Concert in the Park, along with Councilmember Rosansky. We put on great programs, we have Shakespeare by the Sea coming up, so I hope you'll take advantage of the many cultural offerings provided by the city of Newport Beach over the course of the summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Selig?
Yes, thank you. Councilman Hill's comments concern me. You remember, Leslie, as part of the General Plan Update Committee, one of the criteria we put in the zoning code update was we were not going to create any non-conformities. And so I'd like this to be an exhaustive report back to us to make sure that we're not having any non-conformities as unintended consequences of the zoning code. Some of the examples that were cited, because we changed how we measured height, setbacks, lot elevation, things of that nature, that we weren't going to create non-conforming situations for folks where they'd have to come in and get extra permits, exceptions, modifications, et cetera. So I think we need to maybe take a look at that, particularly in light of his comments on this parking lot situation.
All right, thank you. It's been another busy couple of weeks. I was very pleased to help present to the Corona Del Mar Boys, maybe I should say men's volleyball team, that they won the award as a national champion from ESPN Rise Magazine. Presented that award to them on Friday, the 17th of June, and maybe we ought to have them in here and do it upright on behalf of the city, if they're, if they care to do it, and if we can track them down over the summer. That was a very big deal, and the campus was just absolutely wild with enthusiasm over that, it was a lot of fun. Also attended the Citizen of the Year Dinner with Tom, honoring Tom Johnson, now our current reigning Citizen of the Year in Newport Beach. Congratulations again, Tom. Very happy to participate, along with Councilmember Daigle and Curry, in the Queen of Angels, groundbreaking. Now, there's an example for us all of interfaith cooperation and generosity where two churches got together, and both are going to wind up not long from now with brand-new churches. And it's a good example for all of us in public governance and elsewhere in our lives that we can have win-win situations when we can find a way to cooperate with each other. Also attended the Mr. Irrelevant kickoff celebration on Monday, June 20th, at the Dunes Resort, where Mr. Irrelevant grandly was rowed into shore to receive his initial awards and gifts as the last person drafted in the 2011 NFL Draft. It's a lot of fun and a great event. Thanks to Homer Bludell for, and the Salata family, of course, for organizing this for the benefit of our city. On a little closer-to-home note, I'm glad to see that Curl Fitness has opened in the Lidl Marina Village Center. It's a 13,000-square-foot exercise facility that will be well-suited to any of those that are listening that live on Lidl Isle, West Newport, or on the peninsula. I hope you join, I did. We do need to do what we can to help the merchants in that area. And lastly, today, was very, very pleased, along with most of the people on the dais here and a number of staff, to participate in the Police Department promotional ceremony that honored several promotions to both sergeant and lieutenant on our police force, as well as service awards for 20, 25, and 30 years of service to our city. Very, very gratifying, it's a great event for the benefit of all of the family members and friends of those police officers, and so Chief Johnson did a great job organizing that today. And then upcoming, we had a great presentation from our police department this afternoon on the preparations for July 4th celebration on the peninsula. This is a Fourth of July for, is for families celebration. We're going to have a little parade that starts, organize your float to be at the 38th Street Park at 8:30 in the morning, and we'll do a parade and end up at Channel Island Park for free food and some fun for the kids and the families up until about 11:00 or 11:30 in the morning. And then we're going to have a family-friendly Fourth of July celebration on the peninsula for the rest of the day. With regard to other events coming up, we have the Firefighters Olympics beginning on July the 10th. Do I have that right, Dave? I think I do. And that- I see nodding back there. Pardon?
There's nodding back there.
Yeah, all right. That'll run for approximately a week, with events of all sorts in and around the city. Firefighters from all over the state of California will be participating, and so, you know, give a shout-out if you see these folks around, they help protect not us, but a lot of cities here in California. And with that, we're done with announcements, and we'll have the notice for consent, or for, yes, Consent Calendar.
All matters listed under Consent Calendar, Items 1 through 14 and supplemental item S24 are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Councilmembers have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council staff or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss the consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor and state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Thank you, Leilani. Councilmember Daigle?
None.
Councilmember Curry?
No items to pull, but I'd like to draw special attention to two items. Item number six, which is our lifeguard agreement, which I think most people read about in the newspaper. This is a very historic agreement. This adds a second tier in the pension system, and it has our lifeguards picking up all of the employee portion of their pensions. It substantially reduces the overtime that's allocable to the lifeguards, and it saves more than $700,000 a year in the budget. And it does it without reducing the amount of lifeguard managers and personnel protecting our beaches. And I just want to commend our lifeguard personnel who worked with our city manager to reach this win-win agreement that serves the interests of beachgoers, our employees, and the taxpayers. The other item I'd like to draw special attention to is item 10, which is our streetlight maintenance service agreement, which will save $200,000 annually by contracting out the maintenance of the city's streetlights. And this is, I think, another example of the creative way that we can use the private sector in targeted ways to reduce the cost of government here in Newport Beach, and that's what's helping keep our city financially strong and secure as we go through these difficult times.
Thank you. Councilmember Selig?
I have none.
And Councilmember Hill?
None, thank you.
And Councilmember Rosansky?
Yes, on item number seven, I'd like to register an abstention, as I reside in one of the Improvement Districts, number 68. And on item number six, I'm going to register, I don't want to call it up, but I'll register a no vote.
All right. Mayor Pro Tim Gardner?
Nothing.
I do not wish to pull anything, but I did have a comment on item number 14. These are the recommendations of the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee for the projects that we intend to move forward on in our first tranche of priorities, because we can do more than one thing at once. And so in the first tranche, we will be looking at the Lidl Marina Village City Hall site and moving that planning process forward as promptly as possible. We're moving forward with a Balboa Village Visioning Project in West Newport Beach and on Balboa Boulevard, the planning for landscaping and beautification improvements, and also at the entry of Corona Del Mar at the approximate intersection of MacArthur Boulevard and Coast Highway, doing some planning for changing that entry to make it a much more pedestrian village feeling. And then also to do some work for planning improvements to Santa Ana Heights, Bristol South, that street in terms of landscaping and beautification. With regard to the Balboa Village, well, with regard to all of these projects, actually, we do intend to move forward, the Ad-Hoc Committee will be selecting citizens, members of the citizens advisory panels for each of these projects, and organizing with the great support of staff to move these projects forward as rapidly as possible. And with that-
Mr. Mayor, could I make a comment?
Yes.
First of all, I greatly appreciate all the care and attention of the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee to really update and uplift areas of our community, and particularly thank you for green-lighting the Bristol South Street Landscape Project and getting that ball rolling, and certainly recognizing that enhancing the attractiveness of our gateways is of a high priority, so thank you, Neighborhood Revitalization Committee.
Okay. You know, I'd have to say, I personally really enjoy crossing the border to Newport Beach, you can always tell when you're in Newport Beach. All right, are there any members of the public that wish to pull an item?
Sorry to disappoint you, Mayor Han, I'm going to pull 14.
Why would you think that would disappoint me, Bob? All right.
Jim Moser, I'd like to say something about number four.
All right. Are there any other members of the public that wish to pull an item? All right.
If you're prepared to make a motion, I have two changes I'd like for the record. One is that on number six, there is a payroll date mentioned that should read July 2nd, 2011, instead of July 1st, 2011.
July 2nd?
Correct, July 2nd, just a day later. Hopefully that doesn't blow up the whole deal. The second item is on item 11. There's a budget amendment that you have in front of you that would be attached to that recommended action, it would be to approve that budget amendment. That's for paramedic billing and collection services. And then, and I'm going to wing something here, item number nine, Rob's signaling eight, just to make sure that you are, we are continuing, the recommendation is to continue item number eight there, thank you, Rob. I think that's it.
Okay, this will be a true test of Mayor Pro Tim Gardner's ability to make a Consent Calendar motion.
I move Actions 1 through 3, 5, 6 with a no vote for Congressman, Councilman Rosansky.
I accept that now, please.
7 with an abstention by Councilman Rosansky and a correction of the payroll date from July 1st to July 2nd.
Sorry, that's on item 6 that the correction is.
I'm sorry, okay, 6, make that. Number 8, number 9 will be continued.
Sorry, number 8 would be continued, I apologize.
You said number 9.
I know, I know, I can't read Rob's finger, she's signaling me.
Okay, all right, number 8, continued.
It's a good thing it wasn't item number 1.
Number 9, 10, 11 with the budget amendment, 12 and 13, and 24.
Second motion. All right, please vote.
Oh, I need to read quite a number.
Oops, wait a minute, we have to read the-
Please don't be upset with the messenger here. Item 3, ordinance number 2011-17, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending Chapter 2.12 of Title II of the Newport Beach Municipal Code pertaining to administrative departments or organization of the, and organization of the city. Item 4, ordinance number 2011-14, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending Section 14.30.030D and adding Chapter 15.80 to Title 15 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code pertaining to the Building and Fire Board of Appeals, Resolution Number 2011-58, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach relating to the membership, terms, and responsibilities of the Building and Fire Board of Appeals and waiving council policy A2 relative to the number of terms that members of the Building and Fire Board of Appeals can serve. Item 5, Resolution Number 2011-59, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach approving cooperative agreement C-1-2482 between the Orange County Transportation Authority and the City of Newport Beach for entry in the senior mobility program for senior transportation services and authorizing the Recreation and Senior Services Director to act as the authorized agent for the city of Newport, for the city to execute an actions necessary to implement the cooperative agreement. Item 6 has two resolutions, Resolution Number 2011-60, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach adopting a supplemental memorandum of understanding between the City of Newport Beach and the Newport Beach Lifeguard Management Association, amended Resolution Number 2011-61, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach rescinding Resolution Number 94-41 to modify the paying and reporting of the value of the employer-paid member contribution to the California Public Employees Retirement System, CALPERS, for employees represented by the Newport Beach Lifeguard Management Association. And here's the kicker, item 7, 13 resolutions. Resolution Number 2011-62, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach directing disposition of balance in the Improvement Fund of Assessment District Number 68 Newport Shores. Resolution Number 2011-63, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach directing disposition of balance in the Improvement Fund of Assessment District Number 69 West Newport. Resolution Number 2011-64, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach directing disposition of balance in the ITCC Fund, a sub-account of the Improvement Fund of Assessment District Number 70 Bay Shores. Resolution Number 2011-65, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach directing disposition of balance in the ITCC Fund, a sub-account of the Improvement Fund of Assessment District Number 74 Island Avenue. Resolution 2011-66, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach directing disposition of balance in the ITCC Fund, a sub-account of the Improvement Fund of Assessment District Number 75 Balboa Village Business. Resolution Number 2011-6- Resolution Number 2011-67, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach directing disposition of balance in the ITC, ITCC Fund, a subaccount of the Improvement Fund of Assessment District Number 82 Goldenrod Avenue. Resolution Number 2011-68, hang in there with me, guys, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach directing disposition of balance of the ITCC Fund, a subaccount of the Improvement Fund of Assessment District Number 86 Balboa Peninsula. Resolution Number 2011-69, resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach directing disposition of balance in the Redemption Fund of Assessment District Number 58 Canary Village. Resolution Number 2011-70, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach directing disposition of balance in the Redemption Fund of Assessment District Number 59 McFadden Square. Resolution Number 2011-71, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach directing disposition of balance in the Redemption Fund of Assessment District Number 63 Newport Island. Resolution Number 2011-72, resolution of the City Council of Newport Beach directing disposition of balance in the Redemption Fund of Assessment District Number 66 East Newport. Resolution Number 2011-73, resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach directing disposition of balance in the Redemption Fund of Assessment District Number 71 Balboa Boulevard. And Resolution Number 2011-74, resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach directing disposition of balance in the Redemption Fund of Assessment District Number 72 Balboa.
Mr. Mayor?
The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor? The only thing I can say is I'm glad we don't pay Leilani by the word.
But apparently, yes, we did. Oh, we should vote.
Yes. I thought we did.
Okay. You know, for those of you that are wondering what's going on here, the, it has, it has been pointed out by one of our citizens that the Brown Act technically requires that we, is it, is it not the Brown Act?
It's our charter.
That our charter requires that we read the titles of all resolutions and ordinances that are to be approved anytime we take action. And our city attorney looked at it and said, yes, by golly, that's what our charter says. So even though we publish all of this information in advance, and we put copies of all of it out there for anybody that comes down here, and it's on the internet for anybody that cares to access it there, we do read these titles before we take action. It so happened this evening, there were quite a few more than normal. So, thank you for your patience.
Might be time for some more charter reform.
Well, I do think we should have a budget item for speed speaking class for Leilani Okay. We did have two items pulled. So, the first of those items was item number four, which was Jim Mosher.
Yes, Mayor Hen and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. And a little bit off topic, it does sound strange what our charter says, but I do think it's important. Ordinances and resolutions are significant actions you're taking, and it's important for the audience to know that important actions are being taken, and how many. Regarding this, which is an ordinance regarding the Building and Fire Board of Appeals, I wanted to thank our new community development director for taking the time to personally go over with me some earlier written comments about this. And I think she and the city attorney have made a good first effort, but it is nonetheless a little bit strange to, to see ordinances slipping by from introduction to adoption with no public discussion. I had just a few points. I actually have many, but I'll just make a few so that I won't occupy too much of your time. One of those is another of the trivialities. If you look on handwritten page five, requesting an amendment of a section of the municipal code, this is again something our charter requires. Entire sections have to be amended at a time, and it's actually not legal to amend just one sentence out of a section. But more substantively, I want you to look at page 7 and call your attention to the fee that is mentioned there in the ordinance. I don't know how many of you realize, in the last master fee schedule that you adopted, the fee for making an appeal to this board is set at a very large $6,301, which at least to me seems quite a large amount to pay to obtain a simple opinion from a board of seven individuals who have volunteered their time and service to the community at no charge. I assume that very large fee goes a long ways towards explaining why the Building and Fire Board of Appeals is so little known and so little used. That's a larger fee than appealing to the Planning Commission, or I believe to the council or any other appeal in the city. And I really don't understand why it's that way. And then going to page, and I don't know what you can do about the ordinance to correct that, but it seemed the only opportunity to point that out to you before you have a new fee schedule next year. Turning the page to handwritten page 8, I did want to call your attention to what is an important policy decision that you're being asked to make in adopting this. Letter number G says the decision of this board will be final with no appeal right to the city council. I believe that is something you might, some of you at least, might want to reconsider or discuss, because at least to me, in a user-friendly city, it would seem that citizens should have a right to appeal to the ones who've made the laws being interpreted, especially since these may involve not just technical matters, but also policy questions, such as how you want things to be interpreted, such as conditions under which a permit expires or remains valid. Finally, to cut things short, I'll just make a final point, that the California Fire and Building Codes, which require the existence of these committees, makes some very specific but optional recommendations for the qualifications that the individual board member should have, so that the residents can be assured that this appeal board will have a complete spectrum of building officials on it. And none of that is in either the proposed ordinance or the resolution. So it just says that they should be qualified building officials, but it doesn't ensure that you have all the different specialties recommended or represented on the board. So, there's other things, but thank you.
Okay. Did staff have any comments in response to that?
I'd make one note in regards to the appeal process. I don't know that you folks would be interested in hearing the appeals of this body, because they are relating to construction approach and new technologies that may be outside of the building code, which is fairly technical. And frankly, if I were in that position, I would worry about my, an overturning of this board. So I think it's probably appropriately structured as is.
Are you aware of anyone that's ever raised an issue with respect to not being able to appeal the decision? I know, I realize there weren't very many decisions, but has anyone complained about this?
I'm not aware of any of that. In fact, you're right, there haven't been many meetings or decisions.
Okay. Any further conversation at council? Do we have any members of the public that wish to comment on this item? All right. Moved and approved. Any further discussion? Please vote.
I read the titles in the bunch.
She didn't realize it, but she did. Okay. Item number 14, Bob?
Thank you, Mayor Hen, council. I apologize, I'm kind of coming in late on this revitalization effort, and I've been doing a lot of traveling this spring. But I attended the last revitalization committee meeting on the 16th, and in that meeting, I first learned of the, in item number 14, number three, West Newport Beach, the project, I think that's called Median Beautification Design Project. Since the revitalization meeting of last week, I've been trying to dig up some information to a concern that I have that I think is a higher priority than median beautification. It concerns Neptune Avenue, and it's a pretty dysfunctional road. It's a dead end right now. It runs into the Las Briesas apartment complex, and that complex is scheduled to be completely redeveloped to, I think it's a 26-town home seashore village that will have circulation routes coming off of river and then around out through Neptune. In 2007, it was given an ordinance action. In June of 2008, the council approved the project, which meant that it cleared the Coastal Commission, I believe, at that point. In 2010, it was given a two-year extension, and their permitting would expire as of October of 12, which means that essentially, and, and, and the developer who has the entitlements on this has spent a lot of money readying this project. And I do believe that if we see an upswing in the economy, particularly in an election year, we are likely to see the trigger pulled on this project, and the Neptune Avenue corridor is severely deficient to handle this kind of traffic. Additionally, we reduced the width of River Avenue, and so we would have a really terrible situation, unless there's something I'm missing. And again, I apologize, I came in late to the revitalization conversation, but I, in the last six days, I've been trying to draw information, finally got some today. I really believe that, yeah, I agree, we can spend money and time on designing and beautifying the medians, creating new ones, fine. But, but I think this is a higher priority for West Newport. And I think that because of the nature of how this project was passed and how it evolved with the slump in the economy and home pricing and all that, I, I think it's kind of been, been put off to the side in our minds, and yet this thing could loom up very quickly. We'd be unprepared. Neptune Avenue corridor is severely deficient as a public thoroughfare, as a traffic thoroughfare. I believe that there are public right-of-way issues that, that are defined by the center of the road to the front of the setbacks in the properties. We had some similar issues on River Avenue, and I would just like it to be, one last time, discussed before we approve this as a, as a priority, said, I believe in stone here at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to comment on this item? Okay. Bring it back to council. With regard to the, Bob did raise this issue at the last Neighborhood Revitalization Committee meeting, and we concluded at that time that we would put it on a list of potential projects to be evaluated as and when we are able to complete some of the projects that are on our first tranche of priorities. And that wasn't the only one, there was two or three others. My recollection is that it's a good chance that some of those projects that are on the current list will be completed fairly rapidly. I think within a matter of months, perhaps, five, six months. Would you agree? That's possible, at least? And so there will be a, there will be a process by which we'll evaluate putting new projects into the mix here. And that's one of the ones that we ask to be put on the list to do that. So, I'm, while it may be true that that project on Neptune would go forward, I think there's probably still time. And I do note that that project, I'm sure, was thoroughly reviewed by the Planning Commission and, you know, before its approval, and so I don't know if it received scrutiny on the circulation element. I'm assuming it did. Most, all projects do in the course of that approval process. So, but nevertheless, maybe they failed to notice something that we should have a look at. So, we'll put it on the list and see if we can address it when it becomes appropriate. Does anyone else on council have a different view of that? You look like you-
I mean, my recollection is, I mean, I don't remember exactly, but they are tearing down a fairly significant apartment building there. I believe it's more apartment units than new units being constructed, and so from a, you know, traffic, I don't remember what the, you know, what the, the traffic study was, but certainly those issues were looked at. Although Neptune is in need of help, certainly. That is a deficient street, and I would encourage the city to take a look at it, the Public Works Department. Maybe we can use some money in the, the beach encroachment fund for that. There you go. I would like to ask the city attorney, though, because I didn't really, I didn't really focus on it, but I do live within 300 feet of the medians on Coast Highway, and I, I don't live there, I'm sorry. I own property within 300 feet of the medians on Coast Highway. Am I, do I need to excuse myself from voting on this matter? Actually, you know what? I'm just going to excuse myself from voting on this matter because I do live within 300 feet of a proposed improvement project, which would probably significantly improve the value of my property, so.
Yes, sir.
You want us to give you time to leave the room?
If you want me to, I'll leave the room.
You're supposed to step down from the dials.
Move the action.
Okay. We have a move in a second. Any further discussion? Please vote.
With Councilmember Rosansky recusing himself, the motion carries.
Congresswoman Rosansky, yes.
That completes our consideration of consent calendar items. So, we will move on now to public comments. Public comments on non-agenda items. Does anyone care to make a comment?
Hi there. My name is Bill Coole. That's spelled like the weather, C-O-O-L. And matter of fact, recently, I emailed all of you about something I'm not talking about tonight, about impounding cars without insurance. But tonight, I wish to talk about, on behalf of my neighbors, to let you know, we're strongly in favor of the city taking action against the Meramar Homes in our community. It operates on Dahlia, and, excuse me. At any rate, I want to point out that the owner of this home does not hide the fact that he's operating two homes as one. That may change when the city goes after him, but up to this point, he's been very open about the fact that he's been going against your ordinance, the rehab ordinance, which you sweat blood over. I know you guys really had a hard time on that one. So, we would like to see this ordinance put forward against the rehab on Dahlia, and the sooner the better. I know the, the attorney for the city is already looking into this, and we appreciate that, but the sooner the better. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to make a public comment on a non-agenda item? Okay. Don't see anyone. Therefore, we will close public comments and move on to oral reports from council members on committee activities. Councilmember Hill?
None.
Councilmember Rosansky?
Yes, I do just want to make the public aware that on June 30 at 4:00 p.m. here in the council chambers, we'll be having the first meeting of the redistricting committee. We'll be looking at redrawing the district lines for the seven council member districts in the city of Newport Beach. We're required to do that because of changes in the population of the city. City's grown by 6,000 or 7,000 people. Some of the districts now are quite lopsided compared to others. Nancy's district has about 15,000 people in it. Mike's only has a puny 10,000 people in it. So we need to beef him up a little and, and cut Nancy down a little bit. Give her a haircut. But it is a, a, a public meeting, a Brown Act meeting, so the public is invited to attend. We will have some tentative or proposed maps that will be up for discussion at that point in time, and so we look forward to seeing anybody who's interested in discussing redistricting in the city of Newport Beach.
Mayor Protem Gardner?
The Bicycle Safety Committee meets on the first Monday, but the first Monday is the 4th of July, so we will be meeting the second Monday this month, July 11, same place, the Friends of the Library Meeting Room at 4:30.
Thank you. Councilmember Daigle?
Yes, our Citizens Aviation Committee meets monthly, and Councilman Curry and Councilman Hill also serve on that committee, so if you have airport questions, I know they'll answer them as well. And we are going to be posting on our website frequently asked questions in response to those questions. And then secondly, as we have been getting complaints from Crystal Cove about planes turning early, and permission to do so comes from air traffic control, so it's not being granted by the airport, and certainly not by the city, and nor does the pilot have the discretion to just turn. So we are going to be meeting the city, the airport staff, as well as residents, a couple residents of Crystal Cove with the FAA. So there's a regional office for the FAA in Hawthorne, and they're the ones that have jurisdiction over this. So we're hoping that we can get some corrections for our residents. But we hope that you'll be patient with us. It is a, a process that involves the federal government, so we are, we are trying to do the best we can to advocate for our citizens. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Curry?
No one.
And Councilmember Selig?
I have none.
All right. I have two reports. The Neighborhood Revitalization Committee met, and you already heard the results of that, recommending the projects that we will be working on as we start forward here. And next up on that committee is to name the citizens advisory panel members. And then the Tylenz Committee met and had a very interesting discussion on dredging in the harbor, lower- in the harbor, lower harbor dredging, not just Rhine Channel, but the rest of the lower harbor and the issues associated with that. What's good news about that is that the Rhine Channel is moving forward with dredging and we're hopeful of finding a way to move forward the lower bay dredging while we still have what we hope is a window of opportunity to put some more non-suitable-for-ocean-disposal sediments into the big old hole in Long Beach Harbor that they're accepting contributions to. So with that, we will move on to public hearings. Dave?
Mr. Mayor, council members, the next series of public hearings involve business improvement districts and we have had a presentation on these last time because this is now the hearing whereby if someone was to protest the continuation, especially the assessment of these bids, they would come up. First one is Balboa Village. We have staff available to make a report if you'd like, you may just want to go through them and ask, open the hearing and ask for protest.
Does anyone care to hear a report on these? No, okay, then let's open the public hearing on the Balboa Village bid. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to make a comment or register a protest on the Balboa Village bid? Seeing no one.
Move the item.
Second. Do we have, do we need to read the title here?
Resolution number 2011-75, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach confirming the levying of assessments for the fiscal year of July 1, 2011 to June 30th, 2012 for the Balboa Village Business Improvement District.
All right, please vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Next item?
Item 16 is Marine Avenue bid. Same offer, same offer to have a staff report if you'd like.
Same decision about having a staff report. Do we have anyone that would wish to make a comment? We're opening the public hearing, anyone wishing to make a comment on this item or register a protest? This is the Marine Avenue Business Improvement District.
Move the item.
Second. Please vote.
Resolution number 2011-76, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach confirming the levying of assessments for the fiscal year of July 1, 2011 to June 30th, 2012 for the Marine Avenue Business Improvement District. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, next item?
Number 17, the Corona Del Mar Business Improvement District.
Same offer, same response. I'm going to open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to make a comment on the Corona Del Mar Business Improvement District or register a protest? Seeing none.
Move the item.
Second.
Resolution number 2011-77, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach confirming the levying of assessments for the fiscal year of July 1, 2011 to June 30th, 2012 for the Corona Del Mar Business Improvement District.
Please vote.
Oh, sorry. Please do that again. Councilmember Curry and Daigle. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, next item?
Number 18, the Restaurant Association Business Improvement District.
Same offer, same response. I'll open the public hearing on the Restaurant Association Business Improvement District. Anyone wish to make a comment or register a protest?
Move the item.
Second.
Resolution number 2011-78, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach confirming the levying of assessments for the fiscal year of July 1, 2011 to June 30th, 2012 for the Restaurant Association Business Improvement District.
Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, item 19, amendments to the Vialito amendments.
We would suggest you have a staff report on this item. This is different from, we just finished up the bids, now we're talking about three properties near Vialito. They include amendments to the general plan, the coastal land use plan, the zoning code. Looks like we have, you know, stalled long enough for Roz to get the computer going. So this again, for the audience's benefit, involves a brief staff report, then a public hearing whereby anyone can come up, often the applicant comes up first to make a short presentation, then anyone can come up after that. The applicant can rebut concerns, don't know that's even an issue here, but that's usually how the process works. And then if the council agree, consents to this, they would introduce an ordinance relating to these changes for the first reading. It would come back for second reading on July 12th. Have I stalled long enough? Is it Roz or Greg that's going to make the presentation or Kim?
Thank you, Mr. Kip, it'll be Rozlin now.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. The subject property is located on the west side of Vialito and in the Lido Marina Village. The subject property is currently zoned for multiple unit residential with a maximum 20 dwelling units per acre. The property is approximately 8,100 square feet in area and was originally developed with a commercial use in 1970. Onside parking was eliminated with past street winding. The subject property is currently improved with two single-story commercial building with approximately a 4,100 gross square feet. They are currently occupied by a beauty salon, a day spa, a real estate and consulting office. The existing commercial uses are non-conforming and are subject to abatement. Under the existing RM designation, the property could be developed up to three residential dwelling units with seven parking spaces required. With the proposed MUV designation under the mixed-use scenario of a building total 1.5 FAR, the property could be built under the minimum scenario of 2,800 square feet of commercial use and three residential units. Under the maximum scenario for development, the property could be improved up to 4,000 square feet of commercial use and four residential units. The property could also be improved with commercial-only of .75 FAR with a maximum of 6,000 square feet in commercial use. On June 5th of this year, the Planning Commission considered and recommended approval of the amendments to the general plan, local coastal plan, and zoning amendments to change the designation of the subject property from RM to MUV. With that, staff is recommending approval of the project and available to answer any of your questions at this time.
All right, are there any questions from council? Seeing none, I'd like to invite, open the public hearing here and act, invite the applicant to come up to make a statement if they wish.
Mayor, council, thank you, Rozlin. More or less, this project is...
Would you say your name?
My name is Ryan Chase, I represent the property owner, Alan Fainbarg, who's in the back. Basically, we've owned this property since 1983 and it's always been a commercial use with basically three tenants. Some of our leases go out to 2018 and more or less because of the long-term existing commercial uses and the long-term leases and the limited reuses, the property is residential, we requested the current zoning be changed, as you saw previously. The zone change to residential would make it problematic to redevelop the site due to the small size and unique shape and that's not even factor in the possible setbacks and financial considerations that would be applicable. So again, please support this decision, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions of the applicant? Okay.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to make a comment regarding this agenda item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council.
Second.
All right, further discussion? Please vote.
With this item, there is a resolution and an ordinance, resolution number 2011-79, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach approving amendments to the land use element of the general plan and coastal land use plan for property located at 3363, 3369, and 3377 Vialito and 3378 Vialporto. An ordinance number 2011-18, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach approving a zoning code amendment to change the zoning designation of property located at 3363, 3369, and 3377 Vialito and 3378 Vialporto. And with that, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. All right, item 20. Before we begin with this item, let me just provide some guidance here about how we intend to proceed. There will be a staff report on this item. This has to do with the 333 waterfront restaurant appeal. There'll be a staff report on this item and then any questions council may have. I would then invite Councilmember Selich, who is the actual appellant here, to make any statements he wishes to make. And then we will open this up for a public hearing and invite the owner of the business or his representative, I guess it's Dennis O'Neil, to make a comment. And then we'll invite someone who wishes to represent the homeowner point of view and then we'll throw it open to regular public comment. And then bring it back to council for a decision. So with that, Dave?
Kimberly, you want to take it from here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Associate Planner Janet Brown will give a brief overview of the project and we will proceed in the manner that you just described in terms of the public hearing.
Thank you, excuse me, thank you, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is an application requesting for a new conditional use permit to extend the hours of operation of an existing outdoor dining patio from 9:00 AM to 9:30 PM daily to 9:00 AM to 1:00 AM daily. The restaurant is located here at the corner of East Coast Highway and Bayside Drive. It's surrounded by an office use here to the south. Commercial, sorry, commercial shopping center and a gas station here across Bayside Drive. This is another restaurant here, the Soul Coachina, commercial parking lot. The Balboa Marina is located here along the channel and then across the channel is the Linda Isle Residential Neighborhood. On May 19th, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing to review the application. During the public hearing, several residents from Linda Isle attended and spoke in opposition of the request stating that the existing operations of the restaurant disturbed their peace and quiet. Based on the testimony provided at that hearing, the Planning Commission determined that the facts did not support the findings required to grant a conditional use permit and they voted to deny the application. On May 25th, an appeal of the Planning Commission's denial was filed. Following publication of the staff report to City Council, several meetings were held between the project applicant and the residents on Linda Isle that were concerned about the operation in an effort to resolve the issues related to the noise. As a result of these discussions, staff prepared a memorandum which was distributed to City Council and posted on the city's website. The memorandum includes some proposed conditions of approval that were not included in the staff report if the City Council should choose to reverse the decision of the Planning Commission. These proposed conditions would replace condition number four, which is on handwritten page 31 of your staff report and they're summarized here on the screen. With that, that concludes my presentation unless you'd like me to read these. We're available to answer any questions you have. We also have Captain Fox and Detective Hawes from the Police Department here to answer any question.
Okay, questions of staff?
I did have a question. I was confused and says the new proposal is the one where you're going to go for the whole hours, but you're going to soundproof it. Is that correct? Is that what we're talking about here?
The new conditions would be to do some additional sound attenuating.
Explain to me why that is still outdoor dining then? I mean, how do you attenuate sound from an outdoor dining establishment without enclosing it completely?
The intent was to provide some different materials that would, for an example, a retractable roof with this, rather, right now it's sailcloth, so the intent was to provide some different type of material with the retractable roof that could be closed at 7:00 PM and the windows would remain shut.
And become indoor dining at 7:00 PM?
Correct.
So you get your indoor dining expansion, but you don't have to provide the parking because we're calling it outdoor dining?
That's correct.
Okay, I have a little problem with that, obviously, but let's go on from there.
Any other questions? All right, I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember Selich, who appealed the item.
Okay, thank you. I did appeal this up from the Planning Commission. I appealed it up because I thought there would be some additional room for discussion over the issue. There was concern on both the residents from Linda Isle as well as the owner-operator of the 333 restaurant. The applicant and the homeowners across the water from 333, as the staff said, did have a series of meetings and agreed to some conditions if we could come to an interpretation that the outdoor dining patio could be attenuated to the same level of sound as the indoor portion of the building after 7:00 in the evening. And the, in response to your question, Councilwoman Gardner, the, if you look around at a lot of the outdoor dining patios that we have in the city, they in essence become closed structures in many ways. And so in this instance, it seemed that a reasonable interpretation would be that if it could be opened before 7:00, that it was outdoor dining and after 7:00 that it would be more beneficial to attenuate the noise even if it meant closing the windows and closing the roof to keep the noise inside the building after 7:00 PM in the evening. And I felt that was a reasonable interpretation and encouraged the applicant and the homeowners to go along and negotiate that condition and agree to it because it would be a, it would make a situation that exists now much better than it is and we would be diminishing the sound levels. And I guess the other point I'd like to point out is that a lot of the noise that's coming from there is actually coming from the guest dock that was required to be located in the Balboa Marina and the Irvine Company is in the process of moving that guest dock. It will be moved away from the existing location closer to the Soul Restaurant. And I understand that the Irvine Company is also going to be relocating or looking, I shouldn't say relocating, but looking at possibly moving it to another location or providing additional security or some combination of the above to make that situation even better in the future. So they'll be working on that aspect of it all to diminish some of the noise and disturbance that might be occurring there. Also, the Irvine Company told me that they'll be doing it before the 4th of July weekend so that the docks will be relocated for 4th of July weekend and they're going to be providing some extra security down there over 4th of July. So to me, it seemed like that the agreement that was worked out between the homeowners across the way and the applicant is a reasonable solution to a rather difficult problem where we have a restaurant with an outdoor dining patio that's very close to residential development. I think they're 200 feet across the channel from each other. So I'm in support of the agreement that was worked out and would encourage the council to move ahead on it. I'd also note that the, I don't know that the people across, right across the way represent everybody on Linda Isle, they represent themselves and how far that representation goes, I'm not sure, but certainly those that are closest to the restaurant or the most affected have agreed that this will make an existing and proposed situation much better than exists right now.
Mayor Protem Gardner?
We have turned down, I can't tell you how many restaurants, when they wanted to do outdoor dining, we said, sure, you can do outdoor dining, but you can only have a wall that's three feet high or six feet high or that because otherwise it wasn't outdoor dining. So we're setting a precedent here that says, yeah, if you can enclose it, you can have outdoor dining part of the time. I think that's something we really need to think through. Now, I certainly don't want to get in the way, if the neighbors think that this is a terrific idea, then that's one thing. But I just, I have a problem with us going, when this whole outdoor dining thing was proposed, I wasn't on council, but I remember the discussions and the neighbors were not happy about it, but there was a compromise reached. The compromise was, okay, you get your outdoor dining, but you're going to close at a reasonable hour so we know we're going to get to sleep. And now we're saying, they, so they went around, he's got his outdoor dining, but now he's going, no, 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 I need it till 1:00 AM. Well, as I say, if you guys are all fine with that, I shouldn't be complaining, but I don't think that's a fair deal. I mean, we made a deal, they got the outdoor dining and now we're saying, well, we're going to change the deal on you. It's not just the noise from the restaurant, it's the noise of adding all those people who are going to be coming out of the restaurant at hours until 1:00 AM. Yes, we are working on the dock, there is going to be more security, you're not going to be able to use the dock after 10:00 PM, so that will help in some ways, but you've still got people going through the park. still got people going through the parking lot and everything, which I know is very neat. That was one of your big things. But I just think that I'd be interested in hearing what the residents say because, as I say, to me, there are two issues here. One is creating a new precedent as far as outdoor dining with, sort of on the fly, and the second is that we made a deal and now we're trying to change it, and I think that's not fair.
Well, I'll just say that, you know, we crossed that Rubicon a long time ago. I can go around town and I won't do it here, but there are restaurants in town that we've approved that in essence their outdoor dining areas are enclosed. So I think, I think that point was passed a long time ago.
Councilmember Dale?
Yes, I have a question, maybe staff can respond. When I visited the residents across the channel, their primary concern seemed to be the noise. And so I'm wondering what measures that will be in place to ensure that the noise levels will be in conformance with our code, and is there, you know, monitoring and how that's going to be treated, and what are the additional enhancements to the materials or whatever of the structure that would provide for sound levels that are going to be consistent with our code?
Mr. Mayor, if I can respond to that?
Yes.
The supplemental memorandum that Janet Brown referred to contains a series of conditions that would replace the previous condition that was considered by the Planning Commission but was not adopted because they did not approve this application. But as part of that condition of approval, there is distinct performance standards that are required for the attenuation of the outdoor patio. And in conjunction with replacing the plexiglass with sound rated windows, there's also a requirement that it be reviewed and then tested by an acoustical engineer, that quarterly reports be made to the Community Development Director, and also within, I think, a year time period that a report be returned to the Planning Commission for consideration. So there's checks and balances that are being proposed as part of this revised condition to ensure that the sound associated with the extended hours of operation are no different from the building if the patio were not in operation. So that was really the threshold that they were looking at, and if I could just read the condition of, the new condition proposed, which is 4A, which requires that the outdoor dining patio be attenuated to the same sound level as the main restaurant building when all exterior openings are closed. So that's the performance standard that has been discussed and is included in the supplemental memo.
Okay. All right, I just did have one question. If you can throw up the aerial there, can someone give me a clear view of the relocation of these public docks? Where are they now and where might they go? Maybe that's you, Ed, I'm not sure.
Mr. Mayor, I actually have a copy of the plan that was reviewed by the Harbor Commission here.
Oh.
I just threw this in just in case the question came up.
I'm a pretty good statement, I guess.
The, currently, the boat docks, the guest docks are right over in this area, and they're approved to be moved over to this area here. It's my understanding there's a gate that would be placed here and that would be the only access point. So instead of people having to walk all this distance to these docks, they would go through this gate and just to this area here, and I think there's another gate here maybe that prevents them from going any further on the docks.
So are we moving the problem or solving the problem?
Well, the thinking was that because, part of the problem is that people have to walk so far, and they're talking while they're walking. And we all, most of us, when we drink, probably talk a little louder. So that, you know, you're coming out of the restaurant or you've had a drink or something, and you're coming that long, long way, all the way down there. That's part of the problem. This way, they're coming very quickly, and also it's closed off at 10:00 now. That before, there was more of an honor system, this time there will be a thing, and if you forget it, then you can call a special number and someone will eventually come out, but you will be escorted down there too. So there's, again, another noise control factor there. So it should be quite an improvement, and the residents that were involved in the discussion seem to be happy with the outcome. The long-term hope is that when the Irvine Company perhaps develops the end of the Marina there, that the whole public aspect can be moved way down over there by the.
All the way to the opening, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Down, down where the old riverboat used to be.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that would be great, okay.
So that would, that would be the ultimate solution to the problem, but there's a lot of work to be done before that can happen.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion from council on this? All right, then I'd like to invite a representative of the applicant to make a comment.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Good evening. I am here representing Jeff Ruder, the owner of the 333 Waterfront Restaurant. We're asking, we're respectfully requesting the City Council to adopt the resolution reversing the decision of the Planning Commission, thereby approving extending the hours of operation for the outdoor patio there at 333. I'd like to acknowledge and thank Councilman Ed Selich for working with the applicant and the Linda Isle homeowners in drafting this new condition four, which is up on the screen. This will increase the noise attenuation measures at the outdoor patio. Also, Mr. Jeff Ruder and I appreciate the cooperation that we have received from Don McCullough and his neighbors, as well as their legal counsel, Frank Battle. That's, they do support this new condition to substitute the existing condition number four. Implementation of the provisions in this new condition will address the means whereby the residents and the restaurant can coexist on a more compatible basis. The applicant agrees with the findings, including the changing finding D4 to require the windows to be closed at seven, from 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. And the conditions attached to the resolution, including the substitution of this new condition four, dealing with the applicant's obligation to require sound attenuation at the outdoor patio to be at the same level as the main restaurant and to conduct quarterly noise monitoring tests and implement other noise mitigation measures to address that situation. We are available for answering any questions that might come up, and I do request time after the public testimony to rebut any issues that might come up. Thank you very much.
All right, any questions for Dennis? No. Is Mr. Battle here to speak on behalf of the residents?
Yes, I am, thank you, Frank Battle. The residents I represent are Don and Sandy McCullough, who are here, David and Leanne, Ben Benoudi, and Al Dubrow. I don't speak for the rest of them. My clients were the chief opponents of this project at the Planning Commission level. I also want to thank Councilmember Selich for working out this agreement that we have, and I do want to thank Councilmember Gardner for her support of their, understanding of their problems. The reason my clients like this is because it does require attenuation of what we're calling the outside dining area to the same level of noise as the inside dining area, which does not generate any noise at all, no matter how noisy it is inside. Part of the problem my clients have had in the past, since 2007, is that this outside dining area hasn't ever really been outside. Since 2007, it, for all intents and purposes, has been enclosed, but in an effort to make it seem as if it were an outside dining area, the applicant, Mr. Ruder, had to use materials that just do not attenuate the noise, like the sailcloth roof. So since we're already at the point where it's an inside dining area, we do want them to go ahead and make it really, I know I can't call it an inside dining area, but we want materials that will abate the noise. And that's what we like about it, and yes, my clients do want to have it subject to this new condition four.
All right, any questions for Mr. Battle? Okay. Are there any others that wish to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none? Oh, sorry.
I need to stand up.
Yes, I need to be able to see you, so raise your hand or stand up, whatever you wish.
I'll.
No, I didn't mean you, sir. Please take your time if you would.
Can you hand out a mic if you'd like?
Yes.
They're right there.
All right, thank you.
My name is Al Dubrow. Thank you for listening to me. I live at 104, directly across from 333. I am in agreement mostly with what has been negotiated. The issues for me are the extension of the hours to 1:00, and what happens if the sound engineer finds out that they exceed the code. In the past, we've called code enforcement, we've talked to the Police Department, nothing happens. It would seem to me that if we could add something, that if an outside independent sound engineer showed that they exceeded the code, that they ought to shut down for some period of time versus going on to another year before we can come back and say, it didn't work. I mean, there needs to be some closure. I have a vested interest. I've been in the hospital three times in this last quarter. It worked a miracle on me. I'm up, I'm walking, so I need my sleep at night. This, this hours that they're running, we had originally proposed 11:00, moved it to 1:00. 11:00, I could probably manage it, I could still get a night's sleep. 1:00, and no immediate consequences of exceeding it, seemed to me to be a little unfair. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. While we're waiting for the next person to come down, I guess staff could probably comment on what happens if the sound engineer finds that there's a violation? What's the procedure for addressing that, as it currently stands?
Mayor Hen, we would, we would take that information and determine that it would be a violation of the condition of approval because they are not meeting the standard that was set forth in this condition. We could, we would meet with the applicant and review the circumstances, see if there's further attenuation that needs to be done to the structure in order to meet the required noise level. We could also require a modification to their internal operations if we felt that was necessary. If we felt that none of those measures would be sufficient, we would, staff has the ability to refer the item to the Planning Commission for review of the, of the conditions, again, in advance of the year monitoring report that's laid out in the, in the condition of approval.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
According to the staff report, it says that the new CUP would require new conditions related to the overall operation of the existing restaurant, including the requirement that the applicant obtain approval of an operator's license issued by the Chief of Police. We're right back to the same position again. We passed an ordinance that provides for this operator's license, and we don't have to go through any of those ornate procedures if there's a problem. The Chief of Police can go in the next day and say, you can't be open after 10:00 for the next 30 days until you figure out how to solve that problem. And so it seems to me that exactly what has been asked for is in place at this point in time. It's a brand-new ordinance, and we're going to start to use it.
Sir, actually, no, you may not, I'm sorry. But I do want to follow up on this from the city attorney. Is what Councilmember Hill's, what he just summarized, is that true?
Yes, it is. It's if they violate the terms of their conditional use permit or engage in activity that triggers the operation under the operator's permit, yes, the Chief of Police can identify and cut them back in their actual operations.
Okay. Do we have further public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Bill Klein, I live at 60 Linda Isle, I'm a resident of Linda Isle. The issues here are, first of all, probably more global than just Linda Isle. This is the type of thing that's historically bothered waterfront property owners. When I lived on Lido, we had the same issue with the Crab Shack and the restaurant that was at Canos. And during those debates, the council at the time chose to not allow, to disallow outdoor dining of this type. And I think there's several other historic precedences for disproving this. I suggest that Councilwoman Gardner is correct in that you are about to set a precedent that is not just a Linda Isle issue, it will be a Newport Beach issue, and it will be an issue of property values, disturbances, costs of enforcement, and probably legal action at some point. The representation that Mr. Selich has put forth that the residents of Linda Isle have approved this is incorrect. There are three or four that have approved it. There are 102 residents on Linda Isle, and it has not been approved by the community, the Linda Isle Community Association. There are other people who are not present today who have been bothered substantially by the noise. And the noise is not primarily driven by the boating traffic. It is driven by residents, by the restaurant patrons who are drinking and enjoying themselves and laughing and, and creating a need for cabs to take them home. And if you go by there at any given time, at night after 10:00, you'll see a bunch of cabs waiting for that purpose. I would strongly recommend that you give this greater consideration than apparently it has been given by the planning staff. The attenuation historically has not worked, the, in restaurants, and as a result of that, the amount of disturbance has created a need for enforcement, additional enforcement that has created a lot of time spent by the planning committees. And I think you ought to look at historically the presidencies, precedences that have been set that prohibit this type of approval. Thank you.
Other, others that wish to comment?
My name is Donna Viana. I know most of you from Tydans already. I'm back here again, you're going to be sick and tired of seeing me, I'm sure, by the time we get the dredging done, but we're not here for that. I am vice president of the Linda Isle Homeowners Association. We also have all board members here except one. We have looked at all of this, and we've been fighting this for a long time. Our issue is noise. Noise is the only issue. If you go there and look at that building, if they can attenuate that noise, it is not going to look any different. It doesn't look like the patio over at Canos, the old Canos, and if it can be attenuated, there will be no noise. And that's what we want. We want no noise. However, if you do not agree with the, allowing it to be attenuated, then we want the application to be denied. However, we, again, our issue is noise. If you say, and if it does work out, in fact, by all the sound engineers and everything, that there is no noise, then we're okay with that. That's our main thing. The docks is something else, and we have met with the Irvine Council, I mean, the Irvine Company, and that we will have to deal with separately, but that's not our issue today. That will be an issue later. Moving the docks, that just moves it closer to my house. And I'm not going to like that. And I will be back if there is a problem, but that's not before you today. And I think that is a separate issue that has to be dealt with separate. This is the building, the building, and the main people have met over and over again. If we can attenuate that building, the noise, that's a better thing than what we have now. It is, it's better, but it has to be attenuated. And if you don't allow it to be attenuated, then we are asking that you deny the permit and keep the hours the way they are, even though that's sometimes a problem. As Mrs. Gardner said, we did make a deal, and we'll keep that deal, but I think we could do better, and we could all be happy.
Okay. Are there others, others that wish to comment? Yes, sir.
My name's Don McCalla. I am one of those homeowners affected directly and part of the group that did agree with this concept. And I think our main concern was, as Ms. Gardner says, the 800-pound gorilla is already out there. And we didn't want to see ourselves coming back to bother you or your commission, planning commission, time and time again. It appeared to us that what was going to happen is we're going to be kicking the can proverbially down that road time and again, and that this might be a great way to bury it once and for all. One thing we've all said and we all agree, my neighbors and so forth, were amazed at the attenuation that was done in the main building. We absolutely do not hear sound coming out of that building. The parking lot's always an issue, and we're taking steps to deal with that. Some, Mr. Selig is involved in that. We hope that that'll all happen. Dock situation hopefully will eventually be dealt with, but the sound proper, the building is there. We just didn't want to come back, as I say, with this can being kicked down the road. We prevail. Mr. Ruder comes back next year and asks for the hours again, and back and forth and back and forth, and this seemed to be a way that we could resolve it once and for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Carolyn Klein. I dealt with this issue when I lived on Lido Island, when we fought against windows on the bay getting granted a permit. And this restaurant is not any old restaurant. This is an attractive nuisance. There are people in line at 11:30 at night. There are taxicabs all over. It is not a normal eating establishment. It's pretty much a bar. People do eat there, but it attracts a certain crowd, and it's a loud drinking crowd. So we have to be aware of this. This is not just any old, the old Canos. It's a young person's place, and, you know, you can go there 11:30 at night, there's more cars there than Bayside at 11:30 at night. There's no cars. So you've got to realize what kind of restaurant it is, or a drinking establishment. And secondly, having lived across the street from Joe's Crab Shack, monitoring quarterly is not going to do it. It really has to be monitoring weekly, and we paid for our own sound engineers. And once a quarter to monitor it, it doesn't make any sense whatsoever. You have to have people there at least weekly monitoring it because they might monitor it one night, and that just happens to be a night that there's not very many people, and they'll say, "Oh, it's fine." I would not agree to quarterly monitoring. That doesn't make any sense whatsoever. And, you know, this is a very special restaurant, and you've got to realize that it's a special restaurant that attracts a loud crowd. And the second thing, I think Ms. Gardner's idea was very correct. They're trying to get around the parking. They don't have enough parking, and they're adding additional space that's closed off, and that just isn't right. They have to have additional parking, and if they don't have parking, it shouldn't be granted the permit. And I think it's an attractive nuisance, and the people on Lynda Isle have the right to their quiet enjoyment of the property, and I hope you consider that. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wish to make a comment?
I'm in 106 Lynda Isle. I'm one of the three people, three families that are against this situation. If we can't get the noise attenuation, then this is a raucous club. It is not the nice little restaurant that you go to at 8 o'clock and sit down and how beautiful it is. It gets crazy in there. They advertise on their website, "A young adults' club." Well, it's wild. I mean, here we have over 100 police things from rape, assault, attempted sexual battery, sexual battery, drunk in public 13, no, 15 times, drunk driver, you know, I've got whole things of these. This club is a disservice to Newport Beach. If this is what we represent, Mr. Selig, I'm not so sure that this is where I want to live. I mean, this, Mr. owner says, "Well, you're just being a crackpot because we don't have any complaints from our things." Well, we filed many complaints, but I really hate to call the police for noise. I mean, they're there for saving people's lives and for difficult issues. You look at the line of people standing in front, and these are young clubbers. I mean, I don't want to say hoodlums, but it's not too far from that. And the club owner says, the restaurant owner, excuse me, says that, "Well, we'll make it just an old person's little room in there so he could just have old people in there." Well, I don't know an old person in this community that would want to hang out with these people. We want to get away from that kind of crowd. He says, "Well, they can't go unless they eat." Well, you know, what, does it take some stringed french fries to be able to get into the place? He's just totally out of line. And fine dining with TVs in the room, I mean, this is, it's ridiculous. We just should either make him make it noise-proof or close it down. Thank you.
My name's Max Lisken. I have spoken before here. I'm unprepared. I was watching this on TV, and I had a friend on the phone saying, "Let me know if I'm still taking comments." And I just want to make a couple of quick comments, but they're serious. What I think this comes down to, of course, is homeowners versus businesses in Newport, and that's something we try to balance. And I think from my perspective, I like to live in my home, and we all have a choice where we live, and it's a little harder once you're in your home to move. So then I say, "Well, this business is here too. This is a business that I think does well." And that made me think to a couple of other situations we've had here. And I think this comes down to greed. How much money is enough? This restaurant does very well. What is the other two hours of operation or whatever it is, because again, I ran down here. It's going to help their income statement, but what about the residents on the island? I live on the boardwalk. I can tell you, I can't hear what happens at Cabo Cantina, but I can hear the bikers going by screaming at 2:00 in the morning. So all I want to say is, even last week, and I'll take a side trip, we have a rehab operator, and I think it's a needed function, but again, at what cost is their business to the residents here? And I think it comes down to greed. Maybe they make a little more there, but how about if they didn't take that little bit more and went somewhere else? And I think that's an issue here. 333 is a money machine. You just go buy it. I think that's great, but I think we should all think about the balance, and I think the residents have a point here, you know? So that's all I want to say, and I'll go back home.
Okay.
Is there anyone else that would wish to comment? All right. Seeing, oops. I do want to ask the applicant to come back up and have a chance to rebut these comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Obviously, this can be a rather contentious issue, not only in this particular area of town where you have these commercial areas that are close to residential incompatible land uses, and they're out on the peninsula, they're over in Corona del Mar, and it's a tough issue to deal with. The fact of the matter is, in listening to the support, which may be in opposition, it's confusing because what they seem to say is, if you can sound attenuate it so it's equal to and doesn't make any more noise than the main restaurant, then we're okay with it. And that's exactly what we're proposing to do. Now, we did not intentionally bring supporters out here tonight, which I'm sure you know we could have, because we don't want this necessarily to get into a popularity contest. We're trying to look at a very reasonable solution to a situation that is of concern to the residents on Lynda, but also allow the restaurant facility to accommodate a market need of people that dine later at night, mostly from the hospitality industry, from the hotels, restaurants, and airlines, country clubs, people that actually are working up until 10 or so o'clock at night. And so we think that we ought to be given a chance. We have the standard. The standard is the existing restaurant. We have to meet that standard. If we can't meet it, we have an operator's license that allows the police chief to pull that agreement or that concession. So we believe that the majority of those that spoke about their concerns about the 333 waterfront restaurant are concerned about noise and noise attenuation, and that's exactly what we are presenting tonight, is a way to give us a chance to try to comply. And we are very hopeful that we can. If we can't, then we'll have to deal with that in whatever ways is appropriate. So I respectfully request, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that you do adopt the resolution with all the conditions and findings reversing the action of the planning commission and approve our use permit. Thank you.
Before you leave, Dennis, are there any questions of Mr. O'Neill? All right.
I have one, actually. We're talking at a staff level to see if whether or not the noise compliance monitoring is a cost issue for us. Arguably, the restaurant should pay for that process, and I'd like to propose that as a condition. I think I saw Kim scribbling there, maybe writing down how that might be added.
Well, that was always the intent.
Make it real clear, though.
Mr. Mayor, I would recommend that condition 4B, the first sentence, just be expanded to say, "require the applicant to fund a quarterly monitoring test and report by an acoustical engineer," and then the sentence would continue on.
And arguably, could the city ask for more frequent tests if need be, especially in the early days of this? I apologize for doing this to you at once here, but I think that might be helpful that we would have that discretion, again.
Right. We can incorporate, and I think we could just incorporate into that at a minimum one series of Thursday, Friday, or Saturday within the quarter. So we could just say at a minimum one, and so that gives discretion to the community development director to increase it.
This would be a minimum.
We're saying a minimum of one.
A minimum of one.
If the community development director found that there was a need for something more frequently, she could direct that that happen. All right. And it's clear that it's the city that would be conducting this test. The applicant is merely paying the cost of it.
That is correct. The city would be.
The applicant doesn't hire the testing company. It's hired by the city.
Correct.
And the applicant pays the cost. So, Mr. O'Neill, how does that sound to you?
Well, we understand that, we've always understood that we would be paying the cost for the acoustical testing. We thought that, you know, quarterly was appropriate. It appears that the biggest concern of the community over on Lynda is during the summer months, and I don't know if there's that much concern during the winter months, and so that's why we suggested the quarterly reports with at least two of the reports to occur in August and September, I believe is the way the condition's written.
So changing the language to a minimum of one per quarter, is that a problem for you?
One per quarter?
A minimum of.
A minimum of one per quarter.
No, it's not a problem.
In other words, granting the planning director discretion to increase the frequency of noise testing.
Yeah, we'll agree to that reluctantly, but, you know, I think that that's fair and reasonable. We'll do that, yes.
Okay. Okay. I see heads nodding. All right. Councilmember Curry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, we have an interesting, thank you, Dennis. We have an interesting conundrum. Most of you who've emailed me know that I've written back and said that I intend to oppose this appeal today, so, but I've also heard some of you say that if you can make the noise, attenuate the noise fully so that it's better than it is now, then we're going to be for it. So just let me take a little poll here for those of you here on this issue. The choices are, we can approve this, but condition it in such a way that there's noise monitoring, that it's fully attenuated, so essentially the same standards as the regular restaurant, and the boat docks are going to be moved, and I commend Councilmember Selig for working that out, and the Irvine Company for their cooperation. I think it's going to be a big help. We can approve that, and arguably, the situation will be better, particularly up until 9:00 for those who've experienced noise now. Or we can deny it, and the status quo stays, but he doesn't have the later dining hour. So how many of you would prefer us to approve this with the sound attenuation and the monitoring and all of that that you've heard outlined tonight? This is going to be hard. And how many of you would be opposed to that?
Not opposed.
Okay.
Not opposed because of the extension of hours.
Okay. Well, that didn't help much at all, did it? Well, this is a tough, a tough matter. I will tell you this, I'm not impressed by the somewhat disingenuous form letters that suggest that they need to be open from 9:00 to midnight so that people can dine with their grandchildren. I will tell you this, in my entire life, I never dined with my grandparents after 9:00 and never at a place like 333. Let me think about this further.
Councilmember Selig.
Yes, thank you. Well, I think that, you know, one of the big differences here over previous situations is we now have the operator's permit, and there's a stringent set of conditions set forth here. If Mr. Ruder doesn't operate, and within those conditions, we have the ability to take that operator's permit away immediately, as has been mentioned. We adopted that ordinance specifically for situations such as this, where if we wanted to give an applicant a chance to operate a facility and then have an alternative where we could remove the permit immediately if he violated the conditions. And I think we have an ideal situation to test that out here, and so I would go ahead and move that we reverse the decision of the planning commission and adopt the resolution as with the amendments, and the revised finding is suggested by the staff.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it, and the reason being is I met with the physician and his wife, and Mr. McCullough and his wife, and, you know, they clearly said noise is our issue, and I'm really pleased to hear that what you're saying now is that the noise, there's going to be more noise mitigation, and it's going to be done to an acceptable level, so we have a better situation than the status quo. So I'm really pleased that you worked with the owner, and I think we have an agreement that those that I visited with expressed concerns about initially. So I will be seconding and supporting the motion.
Okay. Further discussion? Mayor Protim Gergen.
I don't really see how it's an improvement, even if they attenuate, because it's the same until, same hours, same kind of openness, and then later on it's attenuated. Well, if you close it when it's supposed to be closed, it's attenuated anyway. Also, it's just, I mean, I agree. I don't take my grandkids out at dinner at 9:00, and if people want to dine late at night, why can't they dine inside 333? I mean, you serve food, I'm sure, so I don't know that this is really necessary. I understand the argument. I think it's a good effort, but I think in the long run, I don't think it's the solution.
Councilmember Hill.
I will be supporting the motion, and my reasoning is that I have, I don't frequent these kind of places very often, but I was there once, and it was very noisy.
You have too much gray hair.
I know. And I don't have any grandkids yet, but give me about four days now. The situation that I saw when I was there was that the dock was a major issue. You get off on the dock, and you have to walk across the restaurant, you have to walk across Seoul, you have to go up, you have to come around, back around, and there's just a lot of time to talk and be noisy outside, and anybody that lives by the water knows that a whisper carries incredibly. And it isn't attenuated now. It is closed, but it's not attenuated now. And so anybody on the patio can be heard, I'm sure, 200 feet across the way. If we can close that sound gap and solve that problem, then to me, it's worth doing. The risk is, is that it doesn't work or that the owner doesn't comply. If it doesn't work, he doesn't get his permit to move forward because there are conditions that, you know, engineered conditions that set the parameters that it has to work. So you have to assume that if he's going to take these longer hours, it's going to work. So then, what if he doesn't comply? And I come back once again to this new operator's ordinance that we have. And I come back once again to this new operator's ordinance that we have. We passed that ordinance, as Councilmember Selig said, just for this kind of purpose. It used to be, if they didn't comply, we used to have to go through all kinds of processes that took months to take place. And, you know, and you just waited and waited and waited while you continued to suffer and suffer and suffer. And we said, you know what? If we got bad operators, we should be able to deal with them right now. If we've got good operators, we should allow them to achieve the economic vitality that we'd like to have. And so, that's where the operator's license came from. It's not an experiment. It was used very successfully by our chief of police in Long Beach. And so, I'm very much in favor of trying that. We have an operator, we have an owner. I don't know what this is going to cost, but he's going to have to probably spend some serious money to make this happen. So, he's going at risk for this. And if he screws up, too bad. But if he doesn't screw up, and he gets his permit to proceed because it has been attenuated, then everyone wins off of that. So, I'm supporting the motion. I think, I go for improvement because we have safety checks to make sure that it will happen.
Councilmember Selig? Oh, okay. Well, you had your line on. These kinds of situations are all very fact-specific. I think each situation needs to be separately evaluated. I think this operator's license is an important tool for us. And I note that the chief of police has been sitting through this entire discussion, which I'm actually, thank you very much, Jay, for doing that, because sitting through this discussion is going to give you a much better perspective on how and when you should exercise your authority here. And I have a good deal of confidence that you will appropriately do that. You know, so from the perspective of having that extra tool and what really, although I did have a little difficulty trying to understand who was for and against what in the public comment, one thing that did read through loud and clear, if you will, is that noise is the issue. And if, I think, this is really quite a unique situation for the noise to be attenuated to the level of the enclosed premises. That's a very striking standard, which was reaffirmed by the people that said, "We can't hear anything when the restaurants all closed," you know, "when the windows are all closed." And so, I guess, while I'm ordinarily representing the peninsula, I'm ordinarily extremely sensitive to these kinds of situations. I do think we have to be able to be reasonable and fact-specific. And so, based upon what I've heard here and realizing that I'm going to make half the people mad at me anyway, I have to make a decision here that I think is reasonable based on these facts. And so, I'll be supporting the motion for that reason. So, is there any more comment? If not, please vote.
Before you do, let me make sure staff is very clear on what's being voted on. You're comfortable with the language. No one has any other questions?
Yes.
Okay. And then, do we have to read something?
Yes. Resolution number 2011-80, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach reversing the decision of the planning commission and approving conditional use permit number UP 2011-007 as amended for an eating and drinking establishment located at 333 Bayside Drive. And with that, the motion carries with councilmembers Curry and Gardner voting no.
That finishes item number 20, 333 Waterfront Restaurant Appeal. The agenda currently shows that item number 21, resolution for the budget adoption, would be the next item to be considered. However, there was an error in how the agenda was prepared. We really do need to consider item number 22 before we consider item number 21 because it's a part of the budget resolution. And so, therefore, with council's indulgence, we'll move up item 22 to be considered next. I see indulgence, and so, we'll do that. And so, do we have a staff report on item number 22, which is the special event support recommendations?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. We do have a staff report. And I wanted Tara Finnegan, our public information manager, is going to give a brief presentation. I wanted to back up from that and offer some thoughts on this. This has been a very complex process, and I think everybody involved in it would say it hasn't been anywhere near perfect, and it needs significant improvement. I think it's better than what happened before because what happened before with our special events and with especially fee waivers is fairly random and indeed done without direct authority of the council. And I was uncomfortable with it as soon as I saw how it was done. So, I asked Tara and then the council and the city attorney to look at it and improve that process. And I think this is an improvement. I'd like to thank Tara and Shirley of my office and especially the CAC committee members for all the work that went into that review. As I say that, too, I want to recognize there are a lot of wonderful events that occur in our city. Everything from small to large, everything from community-based to economic and tourism-based. And I think Mayor Hen always puts this well. He always says, "The city is special because we do different things than other cities." And I will note that I think it's uncommon, if not unique, where a city provides this level of financial contribution to events. Very uncommon, certainly in these times. And indeed, the past support, which ranged anywhere from $200,000 to $400,000 a year, again, I think is unprecedented in our region. At the same time, looking at the budget, I've asked the departments here at the city to really tighten up and eliminate positions. This is the first year we've had layoffs in a long time. And this has been a challenging time for the city in light of that. It's really hard to sign that layoff letter, and I signed a few more just yesterday. So, the budget proposed for this, while smaller than before, is still, I think, significant, over $180,000 worth of waivers proposed and direct city support. And again, I think that's pretty special for Newport Beach. I think it's pretty unique, and I'm sorry it can't be more, but I don't think it can be much more. So, with that, I'd ask Tara to make a brief presentation of how the process went.
Dave, before you do that, when you say that we're unique, like, can you give us a comparison to some other cities and how much they spend on things like this?
I know anecdotally from where different events will go in different communities. And typically, you pay the full freight, you pay for the police costs, you pay the traffic engineering costs. It's quite rare that a city will say, "Hey, you know what? We're going to waive that for you because we like your event here." Again, not entirely unique, but I think some of the event applicants can speak more to that as to what level of support they may be getting in other communities where they have events that cross community lines. And it's my assertion that it's fairly rare.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight is our continued discussion. We've been before you three or four times now in the past year and a half to talk about how we can tune up our special event support process to help us continue to support community events despite the budget reductions, contain our costs and the event costs, and to provide a more fair and equitable public process for supporting events. Tonight, in the audience, Marshall Topping and Janice Dinwiddie are here in the front row. They are members of the Special Events Advisory Committee, and they'll be available for questions as well. Just to recap, we do have a new process. We're now having one annual call for applications. Our Special Events Advisory Committee reviews and scores those applications. However, they don't recommend any funding. Those scores are passed to a staff committee that recommends funding based upon the amount of money the city manager says he has available in the new fiscal year budget. And tonight is what, the next step. That's what we're doing this evening. We're bringing those recommendations to you to see if you approve or if you'd like to amend those. And then, of course, we'd wrap all of this into the new fiscal year budget. To start on a high note, one of the things we did this spring, when you pointed out you were concerned about the level of the fees that we were charging some of the events, we did switch back. We went from that fully loaded, full-cost recovery model for charging for staff costs back to an incrementally, incremental hourly rate. No overhead is included in that. In addition to lowering those costs, we're also estimating those staff costs upfront for event organizers so they kind of know what they're getting into. A few examples of those differences. For the Spirit Run, if all things stayed the same from their 2010 event, you can see their fees would go down about $7,000. Race for the Cure, from 28.5 to about 18.9, and the Bebo Island Parade would also save a couple thousand dollars under the new fee structure. So, that's the good news. This year, under our new process, we had 21 applications that came in, and that represented 20 organizations. All told, their requests were about a half a million dollars. The CAC Committee, that's Special Events Advisory Committee, that's our nickname for them, began their individual review in early May. This notebook in front of me is the 21 applications that they began to go through. They also began to meet and updated their scoring methodology. In the past, of course, the CAC only reviewed applications for $20,000 or more in city support, and this year, we asked them to look at everything.
Tara, just, I don't know if you're going to cover this or not, but the question of when they put in an amount, do they justify? Do you see what the amount is for? I mean, as far, pretty much, because I could see gaming the system, saying, "Well, we're not going to get everything, so we're going to put in 500,000." We'll get the 100,000 we wanted or something.
We'll probably have more discussion about that. But remember, one of the criteria we set was that the amount requested could be no more than 25% of the total event budget. And then, we also do ask them in their application what that money will be used for. It must be for event costs. We're not looking to aid profit or to cover, you know, other staff costs for the organizations. So, then the committee also divided the applications by type. So, they were reviewing, you know, athletic events together, arts events together. We had some public meetings in which the applicants were allowed to come and make a few comments, and the committee members could ask questions. We collected their individual scores publicly, and then staff averaged those for all the events. And we forwarded those scores for 18 events onto our staff committee, which included the city manager, our budget manager, our recreation superintendent, and myself. Staff then, realizing that Dave was allocating $175,000, came up with a method for dividing that among, based upon those special event advisory committee scores. And from that, we determined that 15 of the 18 were qualified for some level of support. And we also realized that, again, based upon the amount of money available, we were going to have to give a percentage of what was requested. And first, we looked at the cash column and gave them percentage of the cash they requested if that was an option. If they did not request cash, we went to an in-kind request. However, we quantified that because from now, this point forward, we will no longer be doing in-kind things or waivers. We're going to quantify everything and actually put a dollar value on it.
Tara, so what about somebody that asked for cash and in-kind?
We just went with the cash.
You just took the cash.
It had to be one or the other. Mm-hmm.
Why wouldn't you have looked at the total of the two?
Because we couldn't afford to do that. If we looked at the total of the two, everyone would probably get about 2% of what they wanted. Yeah.
Hmm. Okay.
Again, those percentages were, this was in the staff report, but it, we had two events that had an 89 or above, so we gave those 60% of the cash they requested. 80 to 88 got 40% in the recommendation, 70 to 79, 20% of their requests, and below 69, we're not recommending any funding. Few examples, actually, all the events are here, but this is in your staff report. The highest CX scores were given to the Newport Chamber for the Christmas Boat Parade and then the Newport Beach Film Festival. At 40%, we had about eight organizations, including Newport Ensenada, Bebo Island. More of those are the firefighter Olympics that will be held in Newport this year.
That's the one that I didn't know anything about. What is the California firefighters Olympics? And I guess that struck me that it seemed like, it was almost like we're giving the money to our employees.
You have some representatives here. I'm sure they'll be willing to tell you about what that's about.
Okay.
Let's keep going, though. We'll, hold on just a second. Public comment time would be great.
Again, the 20% levels. And we did have three events, very good events, but under the CAC review, they just did not qualify for funding this year. Our recommendations represent $183,000, $880,000 in city support, and that is for 15 community events. We had three events that withdrew from the process along the way. Our next step, again, would be tonight, if you approve or amend what we've recommended tonight, then we would enter into agreements with each event organization organizer. And included in that agreement, just a reminder, we, this is part of our revised this year, that the city will have a right, if we so choose, to go back and review the event financials to make sure that indeed the public money is being spent where we thought it would be spent. And then, right away, the CAC committee and staff and the event organizers, we're going to start to get together and identify some ways we can make the process better for next I can't thank this committee enough. We've expanded their scope astronomically this year and gave them a very tight turnaround time to do the work that we've asked them to do. Again, Janice Dinwiddie and Marshall Topping are here this evening, and we had great support from staff.
Okay. Mayor Protim Gardner?
As we go through, I know we're going to hear lots because I've gotten lots of contacts, as I know you all have, but nobody's gotten enough. So, we all know we're going to get the pitch. But something that's come up by a local columnist, and it's come up a couple of times, and I think that it would be good to be addressed as, at some point, whether it's right at this moment or as we go individually or however we're going to handle it, is the Chamber of Commerce. There are some that feel that we are funding an entity that has a PAC and that somehow our funding for their events is, enables them to shift money or something so they can support the PAC better. So, if the representative of the chamber could come and explain how, what firewalls they have and that sort of thing, I think that would be helpful.
Shall we do that now? Richard, would you care to make any comments?
Thank you, David. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Richard Lures. I'm the president to the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce, a position that I've held for almost 30 years. In answer to your question regarding the Chamber's Political Action Committee, we do have a policy in place, has been in place since 1983, since the PAC was first formed, that separates money donated for PAC purposes from general fund and event activities that the Chamber has. What we do is, we send out an invoice to our members, and we ask them for a voluntary contribution to the Political Action Committee. Don't have to do it. You can do it, you don't have to. It's your choice. And we put this on an invoice that's for membership investment into the Chamber of Commerce. When you go to the bottom line, there's an investment for your membership, and then there's a voluntary political action committee contribution, $30, and the bottom line is what we ask people to pay. In about 60, 65% of the cases, our investors in the Chamber of Commerce choose to include that $30. Now, I'd ask, if I didn't have this opportunity to do this, I'd have to ask the investors for two checks, one for their investment in the Chamber and one for the Political Action Committee contribution. Since that's impractical, we just put it in one check, and they send it to us. When we receive that check, the investment in the Chamber goes here, and the $30 goes there. On a regular basis, then, we clear that money out of the Chamber's checking account, and it goes to a, an account with the Political Action Committee. It's held by our treasurer. I don't have access to that account on a daily basis, although I am a signer on the account as the vice chair of the trustees. That money goes separately to a different office.
So, it's not, you don't say, "Okay, our PAC is low. We need funds. Let's take some money from the general fund, our general membership dues, and shift it over." And now that the city's giving us $20,000, say, for an event, then we can take, put that $20,000 in the general fund and take the $20,000 and put it over the PAC. The PAC funds are completely separate, and they are not commingled, well, they're commingled on that one check, but then separated.
Correct. And it would take actions by two board of directors in order to make what you just described happen. First, the Chamber's board of directors would have to agree to that. And then, second- First, the Chamber's board of directors would have to agree to that, and then, secondly, the board of trustees, a separate organization made up of different members, they're not always the same. There may be one or two that are both on the Chamber's board and the board of trustees. But it would take action by both of them in order to change their policy that I've just described. It's been in place for a good number of years, and a practice that we've had for, since 1983. We haven't, we haven't co-mingled those funds into the discussion. Is this time, are you opening the public comment now? Because I would like to make a comment relative to the process.
Well, do we have any other comments from council of staff? Then we'll open public comment.
Great. I hope that's not part of my three minutes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. I'm just here to say thank you to the City of Newport Beach for giving the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce consideration for this effort. I understand completely how difficult these economic times are. We hear about it each and every day, and you, as a city, are the recipient of money that's not coming in to many of our businesses. So we are very aware of the circumstances that we're all dealing with. I want to specifically thank staff and the SEAC Committee for the work that they did to put this all together, and we certainly appreciate it. I want to take two minutes to just describe a little bit. Some of our audience members, or maybe a couple of the council members, haven't heard my 30-second elevator speech here. But the Chambers, you know, we talk about, Dave mentioned going to other communities to see how we compare. We don't do events in other communities. Why? Because we represent the City of Newport Beach, and we do our events here. Our focus and our mission, our purpose for existence, says that we are here to promote the economic opportunity through business and community leadership, and to enhance the social and civic environment of Newport Beach. Underscore that, social and civic, call it quality of life here in Newport Beach. We do that through five core competencies. First is to promote the community. We think, we think things like the Christmas Boat Parade do that. When we go to our awards dinner and auction, we talk about the nearly million dollars worth of media value that the city gets through the, through the marketing of that particular event across the country, and a matter of fact, around the world. Media markets pick it up as a backdrop to their weather reports or news reports, all about our community. We think that's a great value to the community. Secondly, we promote the local economy here, and frankly, we're not doing enough. None of us are, because we're still suffering here. A lot of our businesses are just hanging on, and we need to do more. So things like the Taste of Newport draw attention to the fine dining opportunities that exist here, and we think that helps that local economy. Our restaurateurs tell us that it's a very important boost. Third, we provide some networking and business development opportunities for our members. Fourth, we represent the interest of business to government. Sometimes there are ordinances or things that we don't necessarily agree with here at City Hall, County Hall of Administration, and, boy, we've had a rash of things coming out of Sacramento lately, as have you. And so, and then, fifth, and finally, we engage in political action. This is not something that we just dreamed up and said, "These are the things we want to, we want to do." These are five things that our members, our investors in the Chamber of Commerce, through multi-surveys throughout the community, these are the things that our members tell us that they want us to do. These are the things that they ask us to engage in, and so we're being responsive to the business community, not only to help those businesses, but in turn, it helps the entire community become a much more vibrant place, and of course, you're a recipient of that. One other thing I would leave you with, and that is, not only do we apply for, for two different events, one of them got funded, the other, some waivers of some fees for the Taste Newport, and we certainly appreciate that. But I want you to know that we also put on 12 other events throughout the year that we think add to the fiber and fabric of the community as well. So, once again, thank you to everybody involved in this process. Really appreciate it, and we look forward to a better tomorrow.
Mr. Mayor? Oh, Councilmember Curry?
Richard, if I could ask a question, the issue really on the table for us tonight is the essentiality, because the Chamber's not been an applicant for funds before for the Christmas Parade, the essentiality of this funding for the success of the Christmas Boat Parade this year.
Well, I want to just say that in the last couple of years, because of economic conditions, you may know that we do, I know that you've attended in the past, an awards dinner and auction, and we've raised some money there. Unfortunately, because of economic circumstances, the attendance hasn't been what it is, nor have been the contributions that we used to get in the past. So although we are marginally successful on that event, this would help us kind of pay for, I'll get into some detail here, a, what's referred to as a non-owned watercraft policy, for example. We've been paying upwards of $17,000 a year, just in case a couple of those big boats go bump in the night, and there's property damage or personal injury that occurs, we have to cover ourselves, and unfortunately, that's an expensive policy. City has covered along with us, and so I'm sure you want to be covered as well. Those are some of the things that make this kind of funding necessary, and, you know, these aren't normal economic times. Normally, I wouldn't be here. I wouldn't even ask for it. But we're all in a different boat here today, and sorry to say it.
Do we have in-kind contributions, though, in the past? There's a lot of traffic involved with the Christmas Boat Parade and everything.
We were trying to quantify that, and the best I could get was, a couple of years ago, we tried to quantify the traffic control, which is about $10,000 a year. That's kind of a back-of-the-envelope look at that from a couple of years ago.
Other public comments?
Good evening, Mayor. Bob Rush, 25-year resident. Firstly, SEAC and Ms. Finnegan did a great job. I'd like to thank them all. I don't want to rain on Mr. Lures' parade, but Mr. Lures hasn't had to come up here until this year, because they were getting fees waived by the city on more or less an arbitrary basis for years. We can debate the specifics. That's not what I'm here for. I have a problem with the city funding organizations that are associated with a PAC. It leads to problems. There are no, I'm a CPA in the state of California and the state of New York. I've been a CPA for over 20 years. I got my, I made my bones auditing businesses in Manhattan, many years, and internationally. I know right now, there are no provisions in the city's auditing of such functions, or actually in the reporting of the Chamber, or FPPC reporting that's required. There's no provisions to ensure that taxpayer dollars that you're giving to these events with PACs will not end up in the coffers of their PACs. Mr. Lures said a moment ago that they periodically, they regularly transfer PAC funds from the contributor accounts over to the PAC. In 2010, they only made three such transfers. That meant they, they held these PAC donations for close to 12 months, and they transferred only three times, $10,500, $824, and $400. These transfers are largely need-based, upon request by the PAC, and none of these numbers are divisible by 30, which kind of contradicts Mr. Lures' statement that all of these are donation-driven contributions that are passed along to the PAC. Can I submit these, please, to the city attorney? I want to point out one other thing. Before we entered the process, the Chamber produced a budget for 2011 for the Taste and for the Boat Parade. The sum total of these two budgets were projecting $90,000 in profit. They were asking the city for over $150,000. If you take that $150,000 away, that means, that leaves them in a $60,000 loss. And so where's that money come from? Mr. Lures was quoted recently as saying, "The money comes from the city, membership dues, and special event income." Special event income and membership dues. I don't see any support, and I'm going to enter that as a record, I don't see any support to Mr. Lures' assertions that the money is not coming from taxpayer coffers. The actual sequence of events is that money is given to the Chamber, or fees are waived to the Chamber. That allows them to have extra cash to free up to do other things with it. They put in their budgets that they give grant amounts and scholarships and things to different organizations that don't even go before the purview of the SEAC. That's another problem. But beyond that, so they get these checks, a single check, they put it in an account, and what, it sits there for a year, and they transfer it over in two times, three times a year. That's not, that's not, in my opinion, that's a good thing. That's a mixing of funds between a political organization and a nonprofit organization, and it goes on for a long period of time. And this is not just isolated to this year. I went back and looked to the FPPC records for the last six or seven years, and it's happened regularly. They were recently found guilty of campaign law violations. Not serious violation, but violation nonetheless. They don't use accrual accounting, I guess. The FPPC found it necessary to warn them that if it occurred again, they would be fined. Now, these laws are put in place to protect the public and the public interests, and this taxpayer money is our interest. It is money that would be alternatively used for roads and parks and a litany of issues. Now, my main thrust here is not to rain on the Boat Parade or the Taste. My purpose is to ensure that the city creates a mechanism to verify that what is passed on to the PAC is not coming from the citizens' coffers, not coming from the taxpayer coffers. That is my intent. Don't want to hurt Chamber's interests, don't want to hurt any special events. I go to a lot of these things. But we need a mechanism to do that. Now, our current audit procedures are not, do not address, they look for the placement of the money, they don't address that concern. And if they produce, if the Chamber produces a budget that has $1.3 million in expenditures, I'm sure, if you chose to give them $150,000, you could find any one of a number of these places where they spent the money. Still doesn't ensure that money has been freed up to go into the PAC.
Okay. Your time is up, Bob.
Thank you.
I have a question. I have a question. What kind of mechanism?
Simple. I'm glad you asked that. Thank you, Ms. Gardner. The, at first, when I first was looking at this problem, I, I was looking at both the Newport Beach firefighter PAC and the Chamber PAC. Now, we don't have that exposure on the firefighter PAC.
Not too long now, explanation.
I'm sorry. I'll make it simple. We don't have the exposure on the firefighter PAC, because they collect their contributions from their members, and they, they contribute them to the PAC as individual line items on FPPC reports, or reflect. So when you look at FPPC reports, you see every individual, $100, $30, $150, whatever it is, every individual that's given during the course of that year. The Chamber makes one single entry into the PAC coffers, and the PAC reports it to the FPPC as donation from Chamber, $15,000, $11,000. You can't see whether individual campaign donation limits are being violated. I could give, if I was a member, $1,000 or $1,100 to the Chamber, and if they missed that, it would go into, as a single line item, into the PAC FPPC report, and it would be buried, even though by law, I'm not allowed to give that much. There are no mechanisms right now to prevent this kind of occurrence.
So they should show, you would suggest that they show the individual contribution?
I suggested today to Mr. Lures, who was very resistant to the idea, that they just simply create a system that would allow them to file FPPC reports in the same manner as the fire department PAC, the firefighter PAC. If they did that, it would require their reports to, from going from four or five pages to 25 pages, which is about the same size as the firefighter PAC report to FPPs, done anyways, twice a year, no big deal. If they're accounting for their PAC contributions, there's no issues.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comments?
Well, I'm happy to say, we don't have a PAC. I'm excited if our staff knows when Election Day is, so I'm very proud of that. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Greg Schwank. I'm the executive director of the Newport Beach Film Festival. And again, I like to echo the sentiment of, I know many of the people here are saying thank you for your past support, and the support of your predecessors. For the last 12 years, we've been able to build on the film festival's success, and 2011 was a very challenging year for us, both personally, on a staff level, and professionally, on some curveballs that were thrown to us, at us from some of our partners. I want to quickly run through a few things on attendance. We broke about 52,000 people. That's based on ticket sales, discounted tickets, free events, some special programs that we've done, passes, and, you know, other activities that we've had during the run of the festival. Screens, we utilize over 13 screens, which makes us a very, very large festival and event throughout the area. We did, because of the Irvine Company's decision, have to move some of those to just the outskirts of Newport at Triangle Square. But I'm happy to say that a number of our other screenings took place for the first time at the lower level of the big Newport, so we utilized other screens in the Fashion Island area. As far as films and partnerships, our team really scoured the globe to get really wonderful films to bring to our community. Record number of Sundance films, record number of US, world, and North American premieres. And also, what's important, and I think unique for the festival, is that we're able to partner with a number of other nonprofit charitable organizations throughout our community, and align them with many of the films that have a resonance to the particular cause or mission, that would also help to give them time in the spotlight. On a volunteer side, we, again, had over 550 volunteers working directly on the festival, committing over 50,000 hours plus to our community for the running of the festival. On the hotel side, in 2010, the festival itself directly booked about 383 films, excuse me, 383 rooms. This year, we had over 518. That's not counting, for the first time ever, a program we did with Living Social, which did a great outreach, and it was a, I think something that probably utilized by other events because of the successes that we had, and that was two, over 230-room nights that were booked through that separately. By UCI study that we did in 2010, looking at the amount of people and the room nights, we're going to be, that, all of that accumulates into about 2,400-room nights that can be tied into the film festival. Like Todd Cordero, who is my director of PR marketing, to say a few words about the outreach and the brand building for the festival.
And thank you again for the time. With our status as a nonprofit and one of the top festivals in the nation, we've been able to garner a lot of advertising and editorial support, both regionally and nationally, as well as internationally, including outlets like Daily Variety, New York Times, LA Times, CNN, Fox News, Dateline NBC, Esquire Magazine, Entertainment Weekly, and many more, giving us more than tens of millions of media impressions throughout the world, giving an opportunity to build both the Newport Beach Film Festival and the City of Newport Beach awareness to upcoming visitors.
I'd also like to say, on top of that, beyond the national recognition, the national exposure, is a heavy emphasis on the key drive markets of both LA and San Diego, and we are going to continue to build on that going forward. A couple of things, looking to 2012. Again, we're going to try and overcome a very challenging year. We had some very successful opportunities that we're going to be building upon. I also want to mention, we had a great success with a lot of our local restaurants, utilizing them for many of our special events, and for, we had a record program where we do a discount program with our restaurants, where they will give back to their patrons a discount coupon to come into the Newport Beach Film Festival, and this was a record year for that. So we're going to continue to build that partnership with that particular aspect of the community. I know at other events, Councilman Hill and I have talked about utilizing for our locals, myself, for members of my staff coming up during public comment, when there's something relevant to talk about on behalf of the festival, we're definitely going to be leveraging that in the future. You know, other organizations, we definitely are looking to reach out to other organizations and to individuals in the city that would have a passion and interest to working with the festival, and... And I'd also like to say that we're open to examining a strategic vision for the future of the festival and how we can build and grow. And I thank you for your support.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions for Greg? Okay. Thanks, Greg. Additional comments?
Mr. Mayor, City Councilman Bernie Swalseth, Vice President of Corona Mar Chamber. Number one, we want to thank the council and the staff for tremendous assistance that you've given the chamber over the past years. The council and the staff have just been unbelievable in working with the chamber, Corona Mar Chamber. I won't bore you with the merits of the Christmas Walk, because I'm sure over the last thirty-four years, sometime, all of you have been there and seen their, seen what goes on there. Regarding the process, I think in some cases, might, should have been maybe a two-tiered system evaluation. One for entities working on a basis for three hundred and sixty-five days a year to bring business and sales tax to Newport Beach versus some other very well-deserving projects that bring in business a day or a few days a year. Christmas Walk draws five thousand or so to the business in Corona Mar and Newport Beach and assists in the sales tax to the city. We pay approximately $3,000 for the Christmas Walk in fees to the city, and this committee recommended only giving us $3,000 for our project. We had requested fifteen. The zero-sum trade just is real tough on us, and I think that's a real hardship. We'd appreciate your consideration of paying us at least at the sixty percent level as you, as a committee, has proposed for some others. I don't believe that we've got a fair process at twenty percent. Doesn't make a lot of sense. For some reason, we're to make a few extra dollars, we take these dollars and reinvest it in bringing in more sales tax to the city by increasing the business in Newport Beach. This money doesn't leave the community like maybe some projects might. So, this is a circle partnership. You assist us in bringing in more business and sales tax to the community, and you therefore assisted in paying a lot of the city's bills. We'd appreciate your help instead of giving us an eighty percent reduction of our request. And if that happens, then this project could be in jeopardy. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Walter, and I'm the Executive Director of Susan G. Komen for the Cure here in Orange County. And I think you're probably familiar with the Race for the Cure. This year will be the twentieth year of the Race for the Cure taking place in, in, in and around Fashion Island. We start at the PAC Life Building and proceed around Fashion Island. It's on Sunday morning, September twenty-fifth. And as I mentioned, this will be the twentieth year that we have been in Newport Beach, and we've been proud to be here. Newport Beach appears on three hundred thousand brochures that are distributed throughout the county. And I appreciated being part of a process this year, although in the past, we have been able to explain the sponsorship of the race and, and work directly with the city manager's office. I understand this year wanting to go through a process that could look at some criteria and hopefully make some objective decisions. I frankly have to say I was a little confused when we sat through some of the hearings in terms of seeing if there was a consistency on that understanding of the criteria. So, I think the clarity and the consistency perhaps are still to be improved. My understanding was the criteria was the number of people that an event would bring into Newport Beach. And the Race for the Cure brings twenty-four thousand people on a Sunday morning in late September. We have thirty thousand people attend, but we know where they come from. Six thousand come from Newport Beach, and twenty-four thousand come in to the city. Another criteria seemed to be the amount of money that would come into the economy. And of course, the event starts and ends around Fashion Island. People have coffee in the morning. At eleven-thirty, they go and have lunch at Fashion Island, they shop. We know this because Fashion Island is one of our greatest supporters. We know that we sell out the Marriott, the hotel rooms for the weekend of the Race for the Cure with those people coming in, love to come to Newport Beach for it and to raise money for breast cancer. Another criteria was the support that the event would give back to the people of Newport Beach. And as you're probably aware, the Race for the Cure raises $3 million, all of which goes back into breast cancer support, support for women going through breast cancer screening, treatment here in Orange County. But specifically, I wanted to let you know that, for example, we provide $75,000 to the SOS Clinic for Breast Health Care for uninsured women, Newport Beach women. We provide over $100,000 for Newport Beach women who are uninsured and need mammograms or diagnostic procedures to find out if they have breast cancer. We are really the safety net of last resort for the uninsured of this community when it comes to breast health care. And we have a Breast Cancer Resource Center at Hope Hospital, all partners with us, where we're reinvesting the money that's raised into Newport Beach and then Orange County. And then, my understanding was if it was an event that was a nonprofit charitable event, that was good, that that was a good thing for the people to be proud of in Newport Beach. And we're really all about saving lives. I want to say that every hundred and twenty-five dollars that we have to spend on expenses is representing the cost of a mammogram for an uninsured woman, and that may be saving her life. I was also a little confused. I sat during the, all of the hearings, and our score for the Race for the Cure were incredibly inconsistent. We had someone who gave us a hundred percent, ninety-four points, a hundred points, ninety-four points, and then sixty-five points and sixty-six points. And so, clearly, there were different understandings by the people on the committee of how they were to score and what the criteria were. In the past, the City of Newport Beach has supplied about $15,000 in either services or funding for us to pay for the services to cover the costs, directly the costs of services for the event. As you saw, the projection is eighteen thousand nine seventy-six, and as it stands now, we'd be receiving $4,000. This is tough. And I can tell you that out of a hundred and twenty-four Race for the Cures across the country, none of my colleagues pay for any city services in the cities they're in. So, I just wanted to address that point. Thank you for your past support, and I hope you will consider increasing it.
Clarification. What is your current fees that you pay the city or that's waived? What's the burden on that part?
The projection for this year would be eighteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars.
So, you have to pay that in, us, and pay to say that in fees?
Correct.
Okay.
Is that, that was the correct amount? Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I would encourage speakers to please, you know, let's see if we can adhere to the five-minute limit.
How about if I do it in three, since I'm from Costa Mesa, and that's what I'm used to?
Yeah. Well, you don't need to take the five minutes. That's for sure.
I was wondering why it seemed like a very long time.
We're special here in Newport. We have a five-minute limit.
Okay. So, now I'm taking up my extra two minutes with, just jabbering. Cindy Brenneman, and I am also with Susan G. Komen for the Cure. I'm the Director of Volunteer Services, so I work with all of the wonderful volunteers. So, I don't work with the development or the numbers or trying to raise the money, but I was at the, at the hearings and when they had the, where you could make the public comment and what they were talking about with criteria. I think that, that we provided everything that was asked for. When I looked at the checklist of, of what people wanted, what you were asking for to quantify what we were asking for, it was check, 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 check. We provided everything. So, again, as, as our Executive Director said, I was a little confused myself when I saw this. We bring in a lot of money to the city. It brings in a lot, in addition to what Lisa Walters spoke about with the three hundred thousand pieces that go out, that's just the mailing, that's just the entry forms. We also have all of the posters that go all around the county. We have, we canvass the entire county, and everything says Newport Beach, Newport Beach, Newport Beach. So, there's a lot of advertising that goes on out there. It's on our website. We do weekly e-blasts that go out to everybody in our database for probably a six-month period leading up to the race. So, it's all of this, these other things that trickle. And we have people that come from out of state that come back for the Race for the Cure every year. This is a really significant year because it is our twentieth anniversary. And Lisa talked about all of the facts, and I'm going to talk about the emotional side of it because I lost my mother at, I was only eight years old. She was thirty-five to breast cancer. So, I work for this organization because it's near and dear to my heart. And to go from, from the support that we've had to have that cut to four thousand, that's a huge cut. That's a really big cut, and we're willing to, to work with you on, I'm probably speaking out of turn, sorry, Lisa, but we're willing to work with you on, on staggering it or, or somehow in the future, talking about maybe what we do next year. But at this point, in our planning and our budgeting, to go from the eighteen down to four is huge. And we do, honestly, around the office, we think of everything in increments of one twenty-five. How can we get to that one twenty-five goal and provide a mammogram for a woman who is uninsured or underinsured? And with the economic times, I know that you guys are having problems. I know, because I live in the city of Costa Mesa, and you guys know what we're going through there. And so, it's, it's hitting everybody, but it's also hitting the people who are becoming unemployed or uninsured or can't afford these services. And we provide these services, and they are vital. We, I'm, I've been on the honor roll. I don't run on race day. I'm too busy with the fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred volunteers that I have to corral, which is like herding cats, but it's wonderful. And so, but I do register, and I fundraise, and I'm a three-year honor roll member, and I'm very, very proud of that. And to me, that's, you know, it's, it is saving lives. It's not a death sentence anymore, and we can help these women. So, if there is a way that you can see your way clear to increase that funding this year, and we look at it for next year, and come up with some, some other plan or some way for us to go for some additional funding, that would be really, really helpful. This is, like I said, just going from eighteen to four, to four thousand, I think is a real challenge for us at this point. So, thank you for your time. See you tonight. Didn't even get redlined.
I'm Sherri Ten Eyck from the Corona Del Mar Chamber of Commerce. I'm on the Board of Directors. And as Bernie, I want to thank you for all the help that you've given us in the past. And the Christmas Walk is dear to my heart, and we have had the support from the city for the whole thirty-four years, and it does help us put it on. It is the one event we have that really benefits our merchants. It was started to bring people down to shop at the Christmas time for our local merchants. And we also gather toys for, Toys for Tots. So, I mean, I would hate to see us have to discontinue this event. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, Jim Walker of the Bungalow Restaurant. I just want to make a few comments about Christmas Walk and the importance of it. Obviously, as a restaurant that participates and benefits from it, I'm not here for selfish motives, but I will say on behalf of the merchants and the people within Corona Del Mar, it's an event that, it's really totally a community event. It's an event that draws a lot of people into the City of Corona Del Mar. As Sherri said, it's been going on for thirty-four years. And the money that has been granted to us in the past has certainly helped offset the cost of setting up and preparing for Christmas Walk. You know, the bid is not a for-profit organization. All of our merchants pay into the bid, and most of that money goes to the beautification and the improvement of Corona Del Mar. So, when we come to Christmas Walk, that's a whole different venue. And the profit or the money that's made from that is something that helps and benefits the City of Corona Del Mar. To have $3,000 as a base compared to what we've had in the past is really putting the event in jeopardy, and it would really be a shame, and I think an economic disaster, to not only myself, but to the rest of the, of the businesses in Corona Del Mar, to look at the prospect of not having a Christmas Walk for the first time in thirty-four years. So, I would hope that you would take another look at it and give some greater consideration to the amount of money that has been proposed versus the importance of that event. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Or fees?
Yeah.
A question for staff. When the city gives out a dollar, it comes from our general fund, and that origin of money could be from a variety of sources. When the city waives a fee, is that assigned to Recreation Department? So, in effect, that department takes a hit, or how does that work?
It would vary, Councilmember Deagle. Let's say we had, actually, I'm going to use police as an example because your fee includes your special event fee, which is basically processing the, the event, making sure traffic control checks it. And then, on top of that, you can pay for day-of-event fees. So, if a day-of-event fee isn't paid, the police officer that's out there, that comes directly out of the police department's budget. And so, it comes out of the general fund in another way. And I've tried to make the point, this year, we really ratcheted those sources down where a year ago, we might have had some padding there. Padding is about gone. So, if, if I were to waive a fee in a police charge, Chief Johnson wouldn't have the, the room to, potentially to make it to the end of the year, still staying in the black.
Okay. And then, we have, I'm making an assumption here that the primary sort of losers when we do these fee waivers was police and recreation?
It's recreation, it's police, it's Public Works, and it's municipal operations. So, all the trash and traffic barriers set up. So, those are the three major sources.
Have we considered, I guess, doing a little different accounting where those departments wouldn't sort of have the burden of, of that loss to their budget? I mean, I don't know.
That's what we've done in the past, and I was saying I'd rather not do that anymore. I don't think it's, I don't think it's transparent. Arguably, you know, it was probably an easier process, but I don't think it's as transparent a process.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Peggy.
Mayorhead, Members of Council, and City Staff. My name's Peggy Fort, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the American Cancer Society Relay for Life, of which I'm the chairperson. And just wanted to first and foremost sincerely thank the City of Newport Beach for its support of the Relay over the last ten years. We had gone through the process and asked for the consideration of in-kind fee waivers for approximately $1,400. And through the application process and the review, there is a recommendation for $800 of in-kind support. On behalf of the Relay for Life, we want to express our sincere gratitude for that $800, and also thank the City for its invaluable support through the council critters, through all the city teams, and through the opportunity to have a Relay for Life in our city. On that note, it is a hundred percent grassroots fundraising effort, all through volunteer efforts. And I'm proud to say that this year, our Relay for Life is the top revenue generator in Orange County, and we've raised close to $170,000 in revenue. So, again, thank you for the city's support, and we look forward to future Relay for Life's supporting the American Cancer Society. Thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Member of the Council. My name's Gary Kutcher. I'm the Vice President of the OC Marathon Foundation, as well as the Race Director of the OC Marathon. And I first want to thank the, the Special Events Advisory Committee for all the hard work that they had. It was a tremendous amount of great events in there. Worthy organizations, and, and difficult decisions had to be made. Newport Beach has been the original sponsor, or been an original sponsor of the OC Marathon since our inaugural event back in 2004. And since that time, we've given over half a million dollars to local children's charities directly and, and raised another 1.7 million through their own efforts during our event. And in the early years of, of our event, the support was critical. And in the early years of, of our event, the support was critical in order for us to even survive. Without your support or with your support, we were able to establish a nationally recognized event that's grown annually. This past year, we had nearly 15,000 participants in all of our events. And we think this is going to bring dividends to the, the community for years, if not decades to come. These dividends are realized in many ways from, from TOT, businesses, restaurants that have people there, as well as an increase, we've, we've more than 100% increased our hotel stay nights in, room nights in Newport Beach in the last two years. After last year's event, we, we did an economic impact report and, and we summarized the OC Marathon generates 5.6 million in direct spending over the race weekend and adds additional nearly 60 million, $60,000 in tax revenues to Newport Beach. And, and the marathon's a great way to showcase the city. And part of this report, we also asked about, about revisiting the city and 72% of those respondents said they will more than likely visit the city again as a tourist. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention our main purpose of the OC Marathon. It's, it's our OC Marathon Foundation and it's our charitable 501(c)(3) arm of the, of the OC Marathon. It's located in, in Newport Beach, as is the event is, is operated in Newport Beach. And we provide programs to the city's youngest residents. Last year's kids run, the OC, had 3,000 children involved in it. And, and our main mission is to create programs that, that increase physical activity, promote good nutrition, provide access to safe after-school activities. And the OC Marathon works with, with local schools, 57 schools all over Orange County, but, but local schools as well, to educate and train principals, teachers and volunteer parents on the importance of good nutrition and exercise in order to prevent obesity and, and associate health risks. This is a five-month training program that we do and it's, it's just a fabulous program where we, we train these teachers. The kids then run for 10 weeks and, and come out and, and run their final mile. And in fact, Newport Beach was the, the greatest beneficiary. We had 650 students, which is 22% of our total group, were Newport Beach or Corona Del Mar residents. But, but as far as everyone else asking, we, we think we have reached a spot. And, and so now we've an established event and even given the economic, the environments, we still believe that, that we're here to support the recommendation, even though unfortunately we were recommended to have zero. And we want to express our sincere gratitude to the council, to the city for all the support over the past years. And, and we just look forward to a continued partnership in the city, allowing us to have the OC Marathon, working with us to make the event larger, greater each year. And, and I thank you.
Appreciate Gary's comments there, Mr. Mayor. Gary, if you had just a second, a couple of, of things. One, I think you finally have now a route that won't require a lot more staff time, I hope, because that was a lot of the cost incurred. And secondarily, I think the lower police costs will end up helping you, helped a little bit this year. And then I was curious, does, does Costa Mesa ever chip in anything for the?
They do. In fact, thanks for asking. Last year, after going here and standing right here, it was ask of me, do we, do we actually go out and, and ask other cities? Costa Mesa's the, the other large city. About 95% of the half marathon is actually held in Newport Beach. We start here. All of our press releases say Newport Beach, but, but 95% of the half marathon, which is our largest event, take place in Newport Beach before they exit Newport Beach up at Irvine and University. The rest of the marathon and then the kids' run takes place in Costa Mesa. And to that, we did. We went to the city and, and they became a sponsor, actually the, the Costa Mesa Visitors' Bureau became a sponsor of ours this past year and intends to continue that support of the event. So that's a big help to us. But, but we understand the difficult times here and, and we just want to express our gratitude for what's been given to us in the past and allowed us to get on our feet and, and flourish. So we appreciate it.
Mayorhead and members of city council, just want to say I appreciate being considered with all these other events.
May we have your name, please?
My name's Justin Carr. I, I'm the fire captain here in the city. I'm representing the Newport Beach Firefighters Association tonight in association with the 2011 California Firefighters Olympics. Like I said, I'm very honored to be in the same rooms, all these people who are offering up very notable causes. I've participated in most of them as a firefighter here in town, so I wish them the best of luck. We are a little bit unique compared to some of these other events. This is going to be the 40th annual California Firefighters Olympics. Last time we hosted was 1975. It's been a few years. I finally garnered enough support throughout my department to take this on and we're excited to have our event here in town. I believe we're seeing increased numbers due to the name Newport Beach being attached to it. Everyone's pretty excited to be coming down here and participating. I'll give you a real brief overview of what it is. It's 30, over 30 events, all mainly sporting events, ranging from softball, golf, basketball, all the way down to darts, horseshoes, bowling, those types of events. It takes about a six-day period from Sunday through Friday in the week of July 10 through 15. And we booked out the Hyatt Hotel with our contract on over 1,150 room nights. In addition, we had added a few nights at the Marriott for overflow. We are lucky enough to be celebrating this event in conjunction with our centennial. As you all know, it's our 100-year anniversary on the fire department here in town, so we're excited to have that as a focal point of our event. Our focus was twofold in hosting this event. One, it's a great event for us, for the camaraderie of the fire department and the firemen throughout the state. We all enjoy getting together, having some friendly competition and having a good time together. But the second part of that is actually giving back to our city. We are honored and privileged to work in this city and we all feel that way. This is a rare opportunity for us on the fire department to give back some of the businesses, the local businesses, and increase and stimulate some business during some economic downturn. So those are our focuses and we believe we can do that. That kind of leads me into what we are asking of the city. The other unique part of our event is we are not asking for cash from the city. We're asking for in-kind donation only. And the in-kind donations we're asking for are venues, sporting venues. Secondarily to that is basically our venues are all being used in times they wouldn't be normally used. So when you see the number attached, the quantified number attached to our value of what we're asking, keep in mind, most of those venues are going to be vacant throughout the entire time we're using them, or they would be if we weren't using them. So we're trying to use stuff when it's not being used and we're trying to give back as much as we possibly can. Our event benefits four different groups, first being Chalk Hospital, second being Grossman Burn Foundation, which is close to our hearts as firefighters. We do a lot of charity work with them. Third would be our Newport Beach Firefighters Benevolent Fund, which was created to assist firefighters and down firefighters and their families from wherever we see fit throughout the state if they need assistance. And lastly was back to Newport Beach Parks and Rec for the generous donation of the venues we would like to give back to them as well. That's our event. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know Councilman Gardner had it.
You answered them.
Okay, great. Well, we appreciate being considered for this. Thank you very much and thank you for your time.
If I could just ask a question?
Yes.
So basically, you're asking for $16,000, which would otherwise be the fees that we would charge you to use our parks or facilities?
Yes, sir.
And then you're turning around and you're making a donation back to the city as part of the proceeds of the event?
Yes, sir.
And David, to the extent that while we're losing the, if you will, rental revenue like we would if we had a sports team or somebody used the field, if it's correct that we're not, that these are being used in times when sports teams are not using them, and this is not incurring a lot of police costs, doesn't sound like it is?
None, to my knowledge.
This is basically, we're waiving revenues as opposed to costs. Is that accurate, David?
I'm looking around for recreation people. I don't see them off, unless they're hiding back there, but.
I guess you're on your own.
I guess I'm on my own, sir. Got to tap dance out of this one. No, I, I think, I, I would like to take a look at this further and see if that's in, I, I obviously take, take Justin for his word, at his word, and would like to take a look at that with him further, especially now that we're so close to the date. It was my understanding that this would have replaced some events that are income generating, basically programs, but maybe not entirely. So if we, if we find that that's not the case, it makes sense to waive more of those fees. Okay.
I can speak to that just a little bit, Ms. Kiff. We did work, I've been working closely with Parks and Rec in all of our venues and trying to figure out the best. We started off with a schedule of what we needed and then they got back to me with what was available and what was not going to displace anything like kids' camps and other types of things they may have going on. So we did work with them as much as possible and ended up with venues that were going to be minimal impact.
In the middle of the night, probably somewhere?
I hope not. I'm not very good at playing basketball.
Again, I, I'd like to take another look at that one and see if that's, yeah, maybe that, that should be a full, close to a full waiver.
Thank you for your time.
Maybe I'll make that recommendation as you get close to your action.
If, if we get close to our action.
I am Diane DeRudy. I'm from the Newport Mesa Spirit Run. I'm basically here to say thank you. Thank you to the city. Thank you to the Special Events Advisory Committee and the city staff. You're helping to keep a 29-year tradition alive. We are, we support the process. Of course, every new process will not be perfect, but we thought it was a very well-thought-out and applied process. And we believe that with seven people on the Special Events Advisory Committee and the four wise people on the city staff, supported by other staff, that I think they did a great job and we support their results and you're helping to keep us going. So thank you very much.
This may seem like a minor, minor detail. It's the use of the word Olympics. As some of you know, I belong to an ancient religion and all the goddesses that are part of the Olympics are actually from my religion. When the International Olympics is held, they include the religious ceremonies that were done in ancient times as part of the opening and closing ceremonies. My understanding is that Congress passed a law a few decades back because they were upset about the gay Olympics and they reserved that the word Olympics could only be used for the actual International Olympics and for the Special Olympics. My understanding is that the courts have said that for religious purposes, when they're actually done as a religious activity, that that's also covered. But as far as I know, you're not allowed to use the word Olympics for anything other than what Congress or the courts had said you're allowed to use it for.
Are there any other public comments? Okay, I'll close public comments. We'll bring it back to council for further discussion. Excuse me?
We were, we were waiting. Jim Walker?
You already did comment on another item there, Jim.
I did.
Are you here to talk about what?
The Restaurant Association? Restaurant Week?
Is there anyone else that can speak on behalf of the Restaurant Association?
Several.
Okay. I think, I think we just need one, but I think that would be the appropriate thing to do, Jim. Sorry.
Okay.
We do enforce this with others and so.
Are you still awake, everyone? I'm Sherri Drury. I'm the president of Newport Beach Restaurant Association. I'm going to kind of wing it up here, but what I want to say about Restaurant Week, it's something a little bit different than a true event. We're not putting on something where you have to buy a ticket to come or anything like that. Basically, what Restaurant Week is, supporting an industry that supports Newport Beach. And this year, we're going to extend it from seven days to nine days, including both weekends. As you know, discounted dining to get everyone out dining to help our industry, which helps the city gain revenue. It supports one of the largest employers in the city as well. So I just would like to ask you to help support our, our cash sponsors to cover our operational needs and our marketing. And I assure you that we're going to do a very good job, make you very proud and to bring a lot of money back into the city to cover what we're asking for and hopefully a big surplus on top of that. So thank you very much. Anybody have a question for me? Thank you.
Anyone else wish to make a comment? Peggy, I have.
Good evening, Mayorhead, members of council.
Excuse me, I have the same response. You were up here once before.
Correct, I was, because I volunteer in the community and I chaired the Relay for Life. I also have a Newport Beach-based company that represents the Restaurant Association. So I'm hoping your consideration to have a couple of minutes to speak on behalf of my client.
I've already asked Jim not to because he's already spoken once and so I think I should hold that to be consistent. I'll throw that out to the rest of council if anybody wants to overturn that decision.
I'd let her speak. She does represent two different organizations and this is really an organization making their pitches here as opposed to just the general public coming up and speaking. So I'd be in favor of letting her, not Jim. Sorry, Jim.
Okay, so we, we have, we have one in favor of making an exception. Rush, you're in favor? Three.
Sure.
That's four. Go ahead.
Well, thank you. Again, thank you, Mayorhead, council and city staff. As you know, my name's Peggy Fort. I'm president and CEO of California Marketing Concepts, in addition to the chair of the relay. But I am the official agency that represents the Restaurant Association Business Improvement District. And since tonight, the council's approving its fiscal year 2011, 2012 budget, I'd like to talk about numbers, specific to the restaurant industry in Newport Beach and what it actually takes the food service industry in Newport to generate the full investment that the Restaurant Association bid is looking for your consideration to help support Restaurant Week. This exercise is simple and tangible. First of all, the equivalency of generating 60,000 in sales tax revenue, as you know, back to the city's general fund, takes about $6 million of restaurant sales. So citywide, if you multiply about 350 restaurants by a conservative check average of about $15, taking into consideration five-star restaurants and fast food, which is what we represent at all ends of the spectrum, that equals about $17,420 of annual revenue per establishment or $46.97 in sales per day, which equates to 46 cents in sales tax. So you ask, how can we raise that additional 46 cents in sales tax? And that's through Restaurant Association Business Improvement District programming and marketing campaigns like Restaurant Week. They brand Newport Beach dining, leverage the association's marketing budget, they generate incremental revenue to participating restaurants and ultimately pay the city back on its investment through leveraged marketing and increased incremental sales, which supports the economic development of the city's restaurant industries, commercial welfare and the city's fiscal sustainability plan. So although many of our Restaurant Association Board members were not able to be here today because they're working in their restaurants, we do respectfully request that you consider to fund Restaurant Week at the level that we had requested or similar to what we've gotten in past years. Thank you very much for your time.
My only comment, and I appreciate in the essence of time your concern, but as you know, I'm very community-oriented. You know, I sit on the board of the Newport Beach Chamber, the bid, the Restaurant Association and the Corona Del Mar Chamber. And I didn't realize that there was a penalty for being community-oriented. I would have liked to have spoke on behalf of the very thing that provides me with my income, which is the restaurant business, and I'm sorry that you're not welcome or open to my doing that. And I'm really disappointed. Thank you.
Do we have any other comments? Okay, I'll bring it back to council for further discussion. Councilmember Curry?
Well, I think we've achieved the perfect storm this year. The city manager was tasked with, and I think he did, significantly reduce the budget for all of these events across the board. At the same time, I think rightfully so, the city manager was working to identify sort of the hidden subsidies in the form of fee waivers that if left as they were done, would cause our departments to run over budget and would diminish the performance of the city at a time when we are being particularly careful of how we manage our expenditures and how we, we do them. And then the third aspect is that we opened up a process, we had a process, that encouraged people who had not been applicants before with the city to apply. And so demand on limited city resources was perhaps at an all-time high in terms of those who came looking for it. staff and a segregation of these funds so that we know exactly that they were spent on very specific items related to the Boat Parade and for Taste of Newport, so that there is an audit trail, so that there is absolute assurance that those funds were used for the public purposes for which they were intended. The Film Festival, in my mind, is a special case, and I think particularly given the disadvantages this year of the locales and everything else going on, and the loss of other major sponsorship, that Greg did a phenomenal job in pulling that together. And if you were out there and saw the enthusiasm of the visitors to our community there, I don't think you could help but be impressed in how full our hotels were during that time. I don't think we can do the full amount they want, but I would support an additional $15,000 for the Film Festival. As it relates to the Corona Del Mar Chamber of Commerce, I think a case can be made for funding at the 60% level, which would be an increase of $6,000 for their program. And I believe as it relates to the Firefighters Olympics with a small "O," I believe that we ought to define our contribution there as being waiving the fees to use our recreation facilities. I think that will get them pretty close to where we need them to be without this being a hidden subsidy because of free police services or things like that. So, those would be the changes that I would propose to the.
I didn't understand your first one, Keith. Say again on the chamber.
That the contributions to the chambers be fully audited by city staff and report back for the specific uses of each of the dollars and an accountability for the fee waivers on the taste.
So, so you're.
Well, at the announcement of the recommendation.
The $30,000 recommendation, no change in recommendation.
Right, right.
There's a 37, 7,200, correct. Councilmember Rosansky.
Thank you, Mayor. I too, not to belay this here, but I will support the $15,000 addition to the Film Festival. It is a special event, brings tens of thousands of people into the city. It's something that I think we should nurture going forward, and I could support that. In addition, the Newport Beach Association Restaurant Week. And again, Jim, I meant no slight to you. You are the, yeah, thank you, the quintessential volunteer, and you do a lot for this community. And I, for one, appreciate it. So, I apologize if you took it the wrong way. It is getting late, though, and we do need to move it along, and I didn't want to have a parade of other people coming up. So, we made allowance for Peggy. But I will support an additional $10,000 for Restaurant Week. It's, again, restaurants here are the lifeblood of our community. They're the biggest single tax, sales tax generator, bigger than automobile dealerships. And I, you know, I remember voting on giving like $10 million to Newport Lexus, and I think we gave Fletcher Jones a free piece of property at one point in time. So, you know, if $34,000 will help you folks, you know, continue with your mission in the city here, providing sales tax dollars, providing dining experience, selling the brand of Newport Beach, I can support that. So, I will put in a pitch there for another $10,000 for you. As far as this Christmas Walk, I can also support that. At $6,000, I think the Corona Del Mar bid there is very active, and they do a great job for the Corona Del Mar business community. It is something that is supported by the community. It is only a one-day event, unfortunately, but I think it does have historical significance and is worth supporting.
Mr. Rosansky, I'm just trying to keep my notes. You mean to support them at the $9,000 level? Well, another $6,000. They're $3,000. He was in agreement with. Keith, which was at the nine. Nine, yes.
Right, $6,000 more.
So, those would be the three that I would support. Mayor Pro Tim Gardner?
I would support the Restaurant and the Corona Del Mar walk, surprise, surprise. However, I don't support the Film Festival. It's already being supported at a very high level, the highest level of the list. I would rather see some additional money go to the Race for the Cure.
Well, like how much?
Another $5,000.
I would agree with that recommendation. I'd rather see the money for the Race for the Cure. And kind of going back to, it seems that, you know, the idea of charging the fire department or having, you know, fire department revenue go to the parks, it just sort of, I just see with our accounting system, and while I appreciate the Parks Department wanting to secure and protect their revenue, you know, that was also a reason, given that they wouldn't have cuts, and maybe there are inefficiencies in that department, there need to be cuts. But the reason, given that we weren't having any cuts or less cuts in recreation is because they have robust revenues. So, I would rather put the money into the community. So, I would agree with that bump up for the Coman Race and also for the CDM Walk.
Okay, other comments?
And the waiver of the fees.
Councilmember Hill?
During the discussions, I had, this was not an early collaboration. I had marked my sheet up, and I felt that the Film Festival was an important contributor to the economy, and I think a lot of this is about economic gain for the community. And I was willing to support $15,000 for them. I think that the Restaurant bid, as to what's been said, restaurants are the heart of Newport, and I was willing to support necessarily $10,000 for them. The Christmas Walk, I had actually written down five. I would be happy with six. And that amounts to 30. And if we were to take the, if we were to take the Firefighters Association and we were just to take that off the books and just do it, since it's just paying money from one department to another, and use that six for the race, then I would be very happy with that.
Okay. Who else hasn't? Councilmember Curry, did you want to make another comment?
Not yet. You've got your button on. Sorry.
Councilmember Selig?
Well, I don't have any more suggestions on top of what's been made. I guess it was up to me if we were going to increase what we're budgeting here by $50,000 or $40,000, whatever it is, I'd spread it across the board proportionately to each of the organizations instead of trying to second-guess the staff and the committee on it. So, I don't have any additional suggestions. I'm going to be interested to see how you're going to resolve this one.
Me?
You're the bear.
Councilmember Rosansky, your button is on.
Sorry.
Okay.
Although I don't, well, since my button is on, I'll just take the opportunity to say, I understand where you're going with that, but I really don't support that. And that's one of the reasons why I insisted when the CAC, or insisted that I understood it, that when the CAC was set up, that the final decisions would be made by the city council, not by the CAC. Because I, with all due respect to those people, and they're all volunteers in the community or know the community, I think it's ultimately council's decision, and I don't support to just, let's just throw some more money and distribute it out. I think there's certain groups that, you know, we supported in the past, we need to support in the future, and for the reasons that I stated anyway, I support the extra money going to them specifically.
No, then maybe next year, we should have a council subcommittee do it, and it might be a better process.
Hey, I would be in favor of that, yeah.
Actually, it's my turn to talk.
And I don't volunteer to be on it.
I volunteer him.
You know, I'm in favor of the process that we set up, because the, we did try to find people who are knowledgeable about these kinds of things, understand the economics of them, and understand how to identify the community benefit. And we set up a series of, we all agreed in advance on the fundamental evaluation points here. And I like the idea that somebody took the time to go through all of this. We have an application process. We think about it carefully. It then has to, the real issue here isn't so much, to me, you know, what decisions the CAC made. The real decision, the issue here, is that we've got a limited amount of money here to spend. And so, we had to size this down to a level that would be more affordable to the city's budget. I'm in agreement with Councilmember Selig. We have a process here. I'm not interested in mechanicking the process. I do feel that we have set an overall target here that is pretty drastic, actually, by comparison to prior levels of support for these events. I'm not especially sympathetic for those that would argue this came by surprise or we need another year to get used to this. We've been talking about this now for well over a year, two years? Well over a year, anyway. And so, people have known that this process has been organized and coming. And while it was not perfect, I'm sure that we can make it better next year. And I would depend on staff to give us a set of recommendations well in advance of next year's process, that we can give better guidance to the CAC in their decision-making. So, I'm in favor of, rather than try to mechanic this, because actually, every single person that came up to this podium has a good reason why they should get the funding they need, whether it's for the support of businesses that are important to the community. By the way, Jim, I didn't mean to offend you by this. So, I would echo Councilmember Rosansky's comments about that, and so I hope you don't take that the wrong way, that we do have a certain set of rules here that we do need to try and follow. But beyond which, I'm just about ready to run out of a voice. And so, I won't be able to talk too much longer, which I'm sure my fellow council members will appreciate. But, but, you know, everyone out here has a very good reason, and individually, I wouldn't argue with any of those reasons. But we have a total decision to make here. I support the process, as flawed as it was. I reviewed the individual voting on this. There were extremes, that if you threw out the extremes on the high and the low, you'd wind up in pretty much the same spot for most of these decisions. So, I wasn't concerned that the voting process of the CAC was so flawed that it should be ignored. And so, my view is this, I think we should increase the amount of funding and spread it across the board. My suggestion would be to take the total funding amount up by $50,000 from what was recommended, and spread that across the board in accordance with the CAC recommendations, and then work next year, in the meantime, to improve this process and to generate a better result. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
All due respect, I could not support that. I'm afraid that that would, remember when the state of California installed the lottery that was supposed to support education? The comment was, all it was going to do is create enough money to create an argument. And no one would win in that kind of a situation, I don't think. I mean, some organizations would get $20 more, $50 more, something of that sort. I don't think that's meaningful. I think that if we have additional funds, we have an opportunity to do something, we ought to look at what the council thinks is their top priorities, because I do agree that the bottom line is the council here. I mean, the council is the one that makes the decision.
Well, I appreciate those comments. A 25% increase in the funding amounts here, I think, is meaningful to most of the organizations. And so, but in any event, let's go this way. Councilmember Curry?
Well, I think, Councilmember Hill, I think, put forward a proposal that encapsulated all of my thoughts. It picked up Mr. Rosansky's recommendation on the Restaurant Association. It tweaked the way we were going to deal with the Firefighter Olympics to where they're held harmless, and it also accommodated Councilmember Gardner's recommendation for the Race for Cure, actually a thousand dollars more than she asked for. So, I think that's a plan I think I could support, and I think there were four or five people around the table that said that they would like that. So, I would, and including the audit of the Chamber funds. And so, I would incorporate that as a motion.
I'll second that. I think we need to have a review of what the motion is.
I can review that. I think I've been taking good notes here, and Tara maybe can help me. So, on the Chamber, it would be 30 for the Boat Parade, 7, 7,200 for the Taste of Newport with an audit of those expenditures. For the Film Festival, it would be 90,000. For the Firefighters Games, it would be, to accomplish that through fee waivers, for the Newport Beach Restaurant Week, it would be 34,000. For the Race for the Cure, it would be 10,000. For the Chamber of Commerce Christmas Walk, CDM Chamber, sorry, it'd be 9,000. And those are the changes. Those net changes, I think, are about 31,000, again, counting the potential credit on the Firefighters Games, which brings that down. So, 31,000 roughly is the incremental increase.
I somehow came up with.
That agrees with my numbers.
Okay. You said it was a $31,000 increase?
And again, that's because of the Firefighters Olympics isn't really cash going out the door, so I took it off.
Yeah, that's still not right.
I had a $15,000 increase for the festival.
I did.
10?
10 for the Chamber.
No, for Restaurant Week. 10 for Restaurant.
None for the Chamber.
No increase for the Chamber.
Oh, no increase for the CDM Chamber.
Well, CDM Chamber gets an increase, not the Newport Chamber.
All right, yes, the CDM Chamber.
Can we do it again?
Yeah, well, I'm just talking about the increases. It was 15 for the festival.
Uh-huh.
CDM Chamber, 6.
6.
Restaurant Week, 10.
Right.
So, that's 31. And then I thought Race for the Cure was another 5.
It was 6, actually. And then I guess I deducted the 6,400 for the Firefighters Olympics in effect.
I see, okay, all right. So, that's the motion, and there was a second.
If you're prepared to move on that motion, I'm going to make, ask for one more minute order. It shouldn't confuse people too much. But there are a group of very small entities that didn't ask for anything, and I know they're going to come by and say, we'd like a waiver of the one-time special event permit. And it's, I think we need to relook at what our special event permit fee is, but these are things that have almost no impact on city life or city staff. I'm going to name those for the record and ask that you authorize me to waive those. One is the Western Roundup by the Newport Harbor Elks Club. It's a one-day event. The other is the Philharmonic, Orange County Philharmonic House of Design. That impacts us not at all, but we end up having to pay a $2,400 fee. The other is the multiple sclerosis Bay-to-Bay Bike Ride. It just comes through town, doesn't involve any controls at all. The other is the Lido Isle Garage Sale, and this is their permit. They may involve some police time, they'd have to pay for that. The other is the July 4th Boat Parade by American Legion Post 291. That's, again, something that doesn't involve any city impacts. The other is Flag Day by the Newport Harbor Elks Club, the Field of Honor Flag Event by the Exchange Club, Earth Day at the County of Orange, and then finally, Art in the Park, which happened just this past Saturday. And again, we have to charge them a fee per our code, and I don't think that we should. So, with your permission, those are all small items, began about $400 apiece, specifically their special event fee, and I'd like authorization to not charge them that.
I'll incorporate that into my motion.
And I'll agree with the second.
All right, I did have one further question, though. The issue of the 1-1 was raised earlier today. Were those fees that Homer was talking about?
They're up to 1,300 now. I know Homer was hoping for a little bit more than that. I, I think, Tara, do you remember? Sorry.
As part of their request, they had an in-kind request, and then they wanted to do a revenue, they wanted to take the revenue off the parking lot for that day. And we didn't think that was an option, so we just simply went with their in-kind request.
Which was what their in-kind was? Do you remember what it was for, though?
I'll have to look it up. I think it's $2,000.
Where do you get 1,300, Dave?
I got Leslie's donation of 500 with the 800 proposed.
The other is the multiple sclerosis Bay-to-Bay Bike Ride. It just comes through town. Doesn't involve any controls at all. The other is the Lido Isle Garage Sale, and this is their permit. They may involve some police time. They'd have to pay for that. The other is the July 4 Boat Parade by American Legion Post 291. That's, again, something that doesn't involve any city impacts. The other is Flag Day by the Newport Harbor Elks Club. The Field of Honor Flag Event by the Exchange Club. Earth Day at the County of Orange. And then, finally, Art in the Park, which happened just this past Saturday. And again, we have to charge them a fee per our code, and I don't think that we should. So, with your permission, those are all small items, began about $400 apiece, specifically their special event fee, and I'd like authorization to not charge them that.
I'll incorporate that into my motion.
And I'll agree with a second. All right. I did have one further question, though. The issue of the 1-1 was raised earlier today. Were those fees that Homer was talking about?
They're up to 1,300 now. I know Homer was hoping for a little bit more than that. I, I think, Tara, do you remember? Sorry.
As part of their request, they had an in-kind request, and then they wanted to do a revenue, they wanted to take the revenue off the parking lot for that day. And we didn't think that was an option, so we just simply went with their in-kind request.
Which was what their in-kind was? Do you remember what it was for, though?
I'll have to look it up. I think it was 2,000.
Where do you get 1,300, Dave?
I got Leslie's donation of 500 with the 800 proposed. Is that off of this year or next year's?
Unless there's donations, we solve a lot of problems tonight.
Well, you know, I'd just as soon include the 1-1 as to the extent of fee waivers.
Why don't you do that?
Yeah, I think we ought to take care of the Marines there.
Can we add that in?
I agree with that.
Yeah. Leslie's money still in there, too?
I'll help him out, yeah.
No, she can have her money back.
Wait a minute.
No way.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion. Is there any further discussion?
Please vote.
With Mayor Hen voting no, the motion carries.
I really would, as we go to the next item, thank everyone's patience for this. This was challenging. I don't think anyone was really happy the way it ended up, and I'd certainly thank the council, and we will be anxious to talk about improvements. Especially, thank the CAC, because, man, you guys put in a lot of time.
Yeah, I hope the committee understands that that was just part of the process. But we really do, I think you did a great job. We just wanted to throw some more money in.
I think I know how to budget next year, too.
We're up to item number 21.
Yeah, we'll go back to the budget item now?
Yes.
So, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, this does not need to take a long time. We now know the budget number for CAC. We're not going to have a staff presentation unless you'd like one. I do want to make a couple of notes on the budget checklist for the record, so that you know there's a couple of changes from the last time you saw it, and I wanted to explain those. One is that we had two management, two budget fellows proposed. I had to arm wrestle with the fire chief, and now I'm proposing that there just be one of those positions. And that, in effect, gives him back a lower level. It's still an administrative analyst. That's the first item on the Fire Department position list. I wanted to make you aware of that. Secondly, if you move down into that checklist, you see where we are crediting the Police Department for 60 percent of the lifeguard officer position for the Drug Abuse Prevention Program. And then, finally, right down there at the end, there's something that I think can be confusing. This is a discussion, it's a proposal, with the City of Mission Viejo relating to purchasing Rule 28 credits. And these are undergrounding credits that, undergrounding dollars, that Edison directs cities' ways, cities' way per capita. And if you're a community that doesn't have the need for it anymore, they're starting to sell those. And they're selling them for 60 to 55 cents on the dollar. Our deal with Mission Viejo is to get them for 50 cents on the dollar, so I think that's a good, good deal. We still have some undergrounding we need to do. This typically goes in areas that are more commercial than residential, but I thought it was too good an opportunity to miss, so that's on that list. 94,000, correct, Mr. Hill. So, with that, I'd welcome any of your questions, and otherwise, the budget is now before you.
Just as a point of process, the staff report says that we should be voting, straw-voting individually on these items on the checklist. I don't propose to do that. We can talk about exceptions if you want. And then, just approve the checklist. So, discussion here? Mayor Tim Gardner?
Do we need a motion on the budget checklist? I will move to approve what is presented.
Second.
You'll want to continue the public hearing, too?
Yes.
I did have a question. I think it might be a little bit of budget checklist, changes, proposed budget, and then within the tracker, which is another item. And that is, with these assistant chief positions, that in fact, they will be paying the full 9 percent EPMC?
The lifeguard positions, yes. Remember, that's the agreement with the Lifeguard Management Association. They will be paying the full EPMC.
Okay.
Lifeguard position. The fire position, that's not negotiated yet.
Okay. When we had met with the city attorney, and it was only his opinion, not to diminish it in any way, was that if it's an at-will new classification, then, in fact, the council could authorize the full 9 percent EPMC? And that, you know, it's not tied to the negotiating, the bargaining unit that they're supervising?
That is true. It's not part of the bargaining unit. It's, so it's, you're not bound by the MOU. It becomes an issue of practice and city manager management, the actual compensation within the structure of the organization.
Councilmember Degal, I hear your point. I, it would be my recommendation that that position be subject to whatever changes are applicable to any member of the management team, when those changes are negotiated, and that's as soon as the end of December, the first part of January. I'm uncomfortable singling out a position beyond my own. Remember, I offered that for my position, that I would pay the full 9 percent. But that those positions be subject to that at the time at which the rest of the bargaining units do that, and that would be my recommendation.
Okay. And what is the timetable that we are likely to sort of strike that bargain?
Well, we're presupposing negotiations, so I need to be very cautious about that. Remember that the MOU reflecting a person in that position would typically be closely tied to the Newport Beach Fire Management Association MOU. That concludes December 31, 2011, so in six months.
Okay. Is that it?
Yeah, I have another question.
Go ahead.
No, it's not that one.
All right. Any other comments, questions from council? Councilman Selich.
Now, just on the capital improvements program, I just want to make sure that our approval is going to include the expanded description on CIP Project Number 9, to include some Babal Islands, bayfront sidewalk drainage issues.
Yes, Mr. Selich, that would be a good thing to make sure is in the recommendation, but that's going to be staff's understanding.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Public comments. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item?
My name is Jim Mosher. I realize it's late, and I realize, Mr. Mayor, that you're not feeling well. But I wanted to make a comment about the politically inestute subject of council compensation, since it is budget night. As you know, our city charter sees council service as essentially a voluntary act with the provision for a stipend to defray the expenses of your service, but with no compensation for the services as such. After correction for inflation, that stipend currently amounts to about $600 for each of the 24 regular meetings you're obligated to attend each year. At some time in the past, a benefit package, unanticipated by, and perhaps even prohibited by the charter, was added, bringing the total compensation for most of you to about $1,500 for each of the 22 regular meetings actually held, or over $100,000 in the course of a four-year term, more than enough to repay the cost of most campaigns. At your February goal-setting meeting, there was a brief discussion of the council showing leadership by bringing its benefits closer in alignment with the types and amounts that are allowed by the charter. And at the very first budget study session a month ago, a slide was shown indicating that the benefits would be reduced by a total of about $45,000 this year, about half the current amount. However, the published budget you are about to pass tonight, in that the benefit package for all of you except one is actually increasing rather than decreasing. I realize council compensation is an extremely small part of a $255 million budget, but I think the public and the employees who are being asked to take cutbacks might benefit from an explanation of how this is going to be handled or addressed. Thank you.
We'll come back to that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name's Josh Yocum. I represent the Association of Newport Beach Ocean Lifeguards. I'd like to speak to the restructure of the lifeguard department within the budget. And I'd like to thank the city management for their persistence and creativity during the process. I'd like to thank the city council for their solidarity and commitment to find a balance between the savings of 700,000, which I believe is what the final outcome was, and the quality of service that we provide to the city. I'm glad that we were able to find a balance between the two. But most importantly, I'd like to thank my membership, the part-time lifeguards within the City of Newport Beach. I think that during this trying time, not only for the city and city management, with all of the media backlash that existed, our members stood by with a great deal of humble and perseverance to stay true to their job in protecting the citizens here of Newport Beach and all of our visitors, and really did it with a smile and a grin, you know? These are great young individuals within the city, and it makes me proud to be the representative. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Okay, seeing none, let's come back to the question raised about council compensation. Dave, can you help us understand? My understanding is certainly that those cuts were made. Apparently, it's not in a way that was obvious. Can you help with that?
Possibly. I may ask Susan to come up and help me with that. Budget guru, Susan Jean Grande.
Yeah, I'm Susan Jean Grandy, Budget Manager. We implemented the recommendation for council compensation that was recommended by City Attorney David Hunt. That includes retirement, cafeteria, and your stipends. We subtracted life insurance, the employee assistance program, maybe David could remember?
The MRP, too?
The MRP.
Yep. So, as a result, the numbers, though, total salaries and benefits do edge up. Is that included in another document, or that's a result of the?
It's a result of the PERS increase.
PERS increase, right.
And more of the council being in PERS than in prior years. So, we could prepare what the difference was. You're right, it is not readily apparent when you compare the fiscal year 11 and fiscal year 12.
So, it's a difference between an increase that would have been steeper had it not been reflected here?
Correct.
And, so, who calculated the 45,000 that was in your slide that was presented earlier?
That would be, had we stripped out, had we made it more equitable from year to year, the comparison, overall, it would have gone down 45,000, had the PERS not increased and more of you gone into PERS. So, that's the difference.
It's in the same nature as the other budget cuts that we've structured here, which are genuine budget cuts.
You're cutting from an increase.
It is a generous.
It's reducing the amount of increase that would have otherwise been suffered.
Correct.
And which would have otherwise come to the benefit of the people sitting up here.
Correct.
Is that right?
That's correct.
And you calculated the $45,000?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'm happy to take your calculation. Now, did you have anything else to add?
Nope, that's clear to me.
And is this consistent with your understanding, David Hunt, of what is appropriate to do?
Yes, it is. It's consistent with the charter, state law, and other provisions.
Okay.
Of law.
All right. So, I think the council has conducted itself in a way consistent with what it has expected others in the city to, the impacts on others. So, with that, is there any other discussion? And there's a motion and a second. And let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
I do want to make one further comment on the budget before we get to the next item here. This was not an easy budget. The amount of cuts was in excess of, well, close to $8 million from what they would have been. Every single department in the city, I think, did a good job working with Dave to try and meet the goals that we were talking about here. This year's budget cuts, though, are half the story. We've got next year's budget that we need to start thinking about, and we need to start thinking about it now in order to be ready. I doubt that we will have the availability of unfilled positions like we had this year to help us reach our goal. I think those are valid gains that are counted here, but we won't have those kinds of things. So, our ability to meet next year's goal, which is another $7 or $8 million of budget cuts, will depend upon yet another higher level of diligence to achieve. And I think it will require further consideration of contracting out of services, as well as regional collaboration on ways to save money. And with regard to contracting out of services, I think it's an absolute imperative on the part of the city to understand what the potential cost for outsourcing of various services is, and to consider those cost savings, if there are cost savings, and then decide whether or not outsourcing is an appropriate thing to do. I can understand how we may choose to not outsource, as it relates to some things where we perceive the benefit of inside-city control to be greater than the cost that we're incurring. But nevertheless, we have an opportunity to uniformly, without resort to special treatment, sacred cows, if you will, understand these opportunities. They include things like jails, the administration of our jails, training in various departments, including fire, and police, and lifeguards. We've already started this process on the helicopter service for the city, which I'm sure will yield savings while still yielding us helicopter coverage. Things like outsourcing of restrooms. We just voted on streetlight repair tonight. Oil well operations, there may well be savings there. Residential trash collection, that's one that some people consider to be sensitive. It's also a very large issue for the city. And print shop, and there may be functions in our financial department that ought to be considered. Those are the kinds of things that we need to be thinking about, and thinking about now in order to be ready for next year's budget cycle. I also believe that it may be possible that we will insource things along the way, and so we need to have a balanced view. And I especially think of that as I think about opportunities to consolidate with our neighboring entities, our neighboring governments here, in terms of fire and EMS coverage, SWAT, and recruiting, investigations, and so forth in the Police Department, fleet maintenance, and general operations. We are engaged in an information technology strategic plan right now that may well yield direct savings to the city, but it could also identify collaboration savings with others, as well as dispatch in jails. So, I really feel very strongly about this, and encourage Dave, you, and your staff to engage in yet a more sophisticated level of analysis all across the board on these items to prepare us for next year.
I move that we approve the resolution adopting the city manager post budget.
Second.
Yeah, I had one additional comment. I agree with the comments made by the mayor, and also, with regards to the emphasis, I know you've been looking at some of our beach operations and maintenance, and how all that works, and that, you know, the cuts are not done yet, you know, continue to do the analysis. And if you could also explore the costs that are connected with the maintenance and fire rings, I'd appreciate that, and add that to your list. And as far as coordinating more with Costa Mesa, I've heard positive things, not only from the residents of Newport Beach, but also the residents of Costa Mesa. I think they are looking for cost savings, and that's something that I would see really as a viable way to achieve that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
One other comment. First of all, I agree with many of your comments. I think that's exactly the direction that we need to go. And we're already, as you can see, stepping up to the challenges for the budget that we're going to deal with next year. But before we do that, we ought to just look back at the budget that we're adopting tonight. And unlike some communities, we had two public comments, one of which was to say thank you. In the middle of this process, we reached an agreement- In the middle of this process, we reached an agreement with one of our bargaining units that went to a second tier and substantially increased employee contributions, saving $700,000. Over the past two years, we've cut about 70 positions out of the city, and I hope most of our residents have not noticed a diminishment in services because our employees are working harder and stepping up and doing a job, filling in for those positions that are vacant. We didn't use our reserves to balance the budget. We added to our reserves. We maintained our AAA bond ratings, and we maintained a very fiscally sound city. And I just want to commend the staff, Susan and David, and everybody involved in putting this together, our employee bargaining groups, who have in fact been true partners in achieving these savings, our employees and our managers, who have come up with some great cost savings ideas that have been adopted, some of which we enacted tonight, and the leadership in our city that continues to work for these efficiencies. So while we do have much to go, we've gone a great way, and the city is in a very good place.
Okay, any other comments? Please vote.
With that motion, there's a resolution, Resolution Number 2011-54, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, adopting the budget for the 2011/12 fiscal year. With that, the motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations on another one in the bag, Dave. This was not an easy one. Okay, item number 23. I understand this, the city clerk has some information to convey to us?
Correct. Pursuant to council policy A2, the Ad hoc Appointments Committee made thereto recommendations for the Harbor Commission nominee as required by policy A2. However, after being nominated, Mr. Chandler Bell contacted the city and drew his name from consideration for Harbor Commission. Also, on the list are three current members to EQAC, and if they are appointed to the boards or prospective commissions, there's a second recommendation to waive council policy A2 that limits persons from serving on more than one standing board, commission, or committee. With that, I will hand out the paper ballots. Okay, I'll do this by individual boards and commissions. So the first will be the Board of Library Trustees. Is everyone ready? Councilmember Hill voted for Jill Johnson Tucker and Eleanor Pock. Councilmember Daigle voted for Gloria Alkire and Jill Johnson Tucker. I wanted to add, there's two vacancies, so there, each council member votes for two. Councilmember Curry voted for Jill Johnson Tucker and Eleanor Pock. Councilmember Rozansky voted for Jill Johnson Tucker and Eleanor Pock. Councilmember Selich voted for Jill Johnson Tucker and Eleanor Pock. Mayor Protem Gardner voted for Gloria Alkire and Jill Johnson Tucker. And Mayor Hen voted for Jill Johnson Tucker and Eleanor Pock. How votes Jill Johnson Tucker and Eleanor Pock? Okay. The two newly members of the Board of Library Trustees are Jill Johnson Tucker and Eleanor Pock. So now for the Building and Fire Board of Appeals, there's one vacancy. Councilmember Hill voted for James Anderson. Councilmember Daigle voted for James Anderson. Councilmember Curry voted for James Anderson. Councilmember Rozansky voted for William Bill Dildine.
W.R.
Yes, W.R. Councilmember Selich voted for James Anderson. Mayor Protem Gardner voted for James Anderson. And Mayor Hen voted for W.R. Dildine. The newest member to the Building and Fire Board of Appeals is James Anderson. Now for the City Arts Commission, there's one opening. Councilmember Hill voted for Arlene Greer. Councilmember Daigle, Arlene Greer. Councilmember Curry voted for Arlene Greer. Councilmember Rozansky voted for Arlene Greer. Councilmember Selich voted for Arlene Greer. Mayor Protem Gardner voted for Arlene Greer. And Mayor Hen voted for Michael Magouche. Arlene Greer is the newest member of the Arts Commission, and she's also a member of EQAC, so wanted to point that out. For Civil Service Board, there is one vacancy. Councilmember Hill voted for Hugh Logan. Councilmember Daigle voted for Hugh Logan. Councilmember Curry voted for Hugh Logan. Councilmember Rozansky voted for Hugh Logan. Councilmember Selich voted for Hugh Logan. Mayor Protem Gardner voted for Hugh Logan. And Mayor Hen voted for Hugh Logan. Hugh Logan is reappointed onto the Civil Service Board. For Harbor Commission, I don't know if there's a reason to, let me just take a quick peek. All seven voted for Bill Avery due to Chandler Bell's withdrawal. For the PB and Art Commission, there will be two vacancies. Councilmember Hill voted for Roy Engelbrecht and Jack Tingley. Councilmember Daigle voted for Jack Tingley. Did you want a second?
Do you have a second, Bo?
You're allowed to. Okay.
Well, let's do the voting, and then we'll totum up, so...
Councilmember Rozansky voted for Councilmember, oh, sorry, Roy Engelbrecht and Jack Tingley. Councilmember Selich voted for Roy Engelbrecht and William Hosfeld. Mayor Protem Gardner voted for Fred Stephanie and Jack Tingley. Mayor Hen voted for Roy Engelbrecht and Fred Stephanie. Councilmember Daigle stayed with her when...
Roy Engelbrecht?
Yeah.
Did you want Roy?
She's allowing me to put in her vote. Okay, Roy Engelbrecht and still Jack Tingley, and then Councilmember Curry, Roy Engelbrecht and Jack Tingley. The two members are Roy Engelbrecht and Jack Tingley, unless I'm told differently. All right. And for Planning Commission, there are two vacancies. Let's see, Councilmember Hill voted for Corey Kramer and Jay Myers. Councilmember Rozansky voted for Corey Kramer and Jay Myers. Councilmember Selich voted for Stephen Coyne and Corey Kramer. Mayor Protem Gardner voted for Corey Kramer and Charles Rotkin. Mayor Hen voted for Stephen Coyne and Corey Kramer. Councilmember Daigle voted for Stephen Coyne and Corey Kramer. Councilmember Curry voted for Corey Kramer and Jay Myers. We'll need to do a second vote, but Corey Kramer is appointed onto the Planning Commission, so the second vote would be between Stephen Coyne and Jay Myers. I have another ballot. So just vote for one on Planning Commission, please. And again, between Stephen Coyne and Jay Myers. Okay, for the second vote on Planning Commission, between Stephen Coyne and Jay Myers, Councilmember Hill voted for Jay Myers. Councilmember Rozansky voted for Jay Myers. Councilmember Daigle voted for Jay Myers. Councilmember Curry voted for Jay Myers. That basically sets it. Councilmember Selich voted for Stephen Coyne. Mayor Protem Gardner voted for Jay Myers. And Mayor Hen voted for Stephen Coyne. Jay Myers is the second appointee onto the Planning Commission, and he is also a member of EQAC.
Congratulations to all the winners. Do we need a motion, a public comment? Oh, sure, let's have public comment.
Mayor Hen, my name is, and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I do not know Arlene Greer, and I do not know Jay Myers, so it's absolutely nothing personal. I see the staff's recommendation to waive your policy about people serving on the same committee. I see no logic at all behind that. It seems obvious that you have no shortage of people who have the willingness and ability to serve on your committees. If a sitting politician is elected to a higher office, they normally would not vacate the seat that they have to move on to the other one. If these people find these positions more fulfilling, I do not see why they would not be vacating the seats they currently hold. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Move to waive the policy.
So I think we need a motion to waive that policy, do we not?
We need a policy.
We have a move and a second to waive the policy. So are there any comments, are there any further comments, any public comments on the motion that's on the table here?
I'd probably be in the minority, but I actually see a benefit to not have them serve two positions, and that is it opens up commissions and committees for other people to serve in our community. And, I mean, I know folks in my district that would love an opportunity to serve the city. So that would be my, I guess I'd make a different motion that we don't waive the policy and that we actively seek residents in the city who want to serve.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's a substitute motion and a second. Councilman Selich. Okay.
So would the deal be they have to pick which one they wanted?
They want, for example, the Planning Commission, people would consider that a bump up, at least that's what Jay told me. And then what was the other, Arlene Greer? I mean, she expressed a real desire...
I'm not saying they wouldn't take the ones, but is that, we're giving them the option of taking the one? Is that what we're, is that what you're saying?
Well, I think, to me, the signal of the, we can give them the option, but, I mean, I think they apply for the new position.
Yeah, we're not saying they have to take it, but they have to take one.
Quite frankly, most likely, they're going to resign from those positions anyway.
Yeah. Right.
Well, that's fine, but why waive the policy, then?
Both on EQAC? Wait, you see what happens?
Yes, they're both on EQAC.
Oh, then, so, yeah, so then we're not waiving the policy.
Well, that's the substitute motion, Steve.
But I just want to know that they have the choice of picking, or we just say, now you're on this and you're off of EQAC?
The policy is you can't serve on two commissions, okay? So what we're saying is we're waiving the policy that's no longer in effect. You could potentially serve on two commissions.
I understand that. I'm just saying, if we don't waive the policy, and now they're appointed to two commissions...
We don't have to do anything, do we? If we don't want to...
We're just talking about how you enforce a council policy on someone. We're not quite sure.
Well, all we have to do is do nothing. I mean...
Well, what, but potentially, they could just...
Send Mr. Mosher over to their house. He'll enforce it, of course, right?
No, 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 no. We already have a policy that says you can only serve on one committee, so we don't have to do anything. If that's what we want, we don't have to make a motion.
They would automatically resign on one, not resign on one.
Yeah, they would have to choose, the way I would read that is, is now that they've been appointed to a different committee, they'd have to choose between the two.
They're gonna pick one.
And then, and then it will bring back to council if they have chosen something other than their appointment, and you'll have to fill some vacancy.
Right.
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion.
Yeah, so if somebody wants to make a, the motion for it...
Well, she withdrew her motion, so my motion's back on the floor, which is we waive the policy.
I don't like no votes of my motion, so...
All right, well, all right, well, I'll make a motion that we don't waive the policy and that the applicant, that the person who's been voted onto a new commission or a new appointment has to make a choice within, I don't know, one week or something, or...
We don't need to do that, because we already have a policy like that.
Okay.
And the terms, the terms don't begin until July 1st. So we need to vote on Keith's motion. Did you get a second, Keith?
Yeah, there's a motion and a second to waive the policy. That is the motion that's on the table for consideration. Do we have any further discussion?
Are we allowed to vote after that?
Steve, your light's on. Did you want to say?
No.
Yeah, can I just get a clarification? What is the policy that we are waiving?
The question would be whether or not, the question is, will you waive the policy they cannot serve on more than two boards or commissions? Or actually, these are council committees and once a commission. But under A2, they're only allowed to serve on one subsidiary board.
So if you vote yes on the motion, the policy is waived, and these two people could serve on both EQAC and the commissions that we appointed them to.
Okay, well, I have a problem with that, because I think it should be a maximum of one commission so that we open it up for others.
So you just want to vote no?
So you can express that point of view by voting no?
Okay.
All right. And do we have any further? Okay, please vote.
Okay, with everyone except for Mayor Hen and Curry voting no, the motion fails.
So we just do nothing?
So what would happen is, is these individuals will be informed that they can only serve on one board or commission, and they'll have to choose which one they wish to serve on. And we'll bring that, or, yeah, and we'll, and we will come back with a report to you as to what vacancies you still have to fill, if any, once they resign from one of the boards or commissions.
I still say we appoint Mr. Mosher as like the sergeant-at-arms on this thing.
All right, let's have some order here. We still have some business.
He's not on any committee, so we can point out to that.
Excuse me, Steve. We have a motion for reconsideration. Do we have any motions for reconsideration? Okay, we are not quite ready to adjourn. Council, Mayor Protem Gardner would like to adjourn the meeting in honor of a person that...
This isn't, was, an old friend of my father's, Joe Collins. He was an adventurer in the real sense of someone who was always off on adventures. He was always sailing across the ocean in some ship or journeying down to someplace in South America. He and my father had one huge adventure one time when they were down in Baja. And my father's rudimentary Spanish, they went, looked at them, pointed and said, this was in the 50s, and said, "Roho." Red, and Joe had red hair, and he said, "You see, roho, roho." Well, it was during the Red Scare, so they thought they were communists, all for taking them to jail, but they somehow managed to find someone who spoke English and talked their way out of it. Joe built a number of projects around here. He built the Jamaica Inn, for those who go back. That was a real watering hole for many of the locals years ago. He is, he's survived by his daughter Judy and daughter Patty, his son Kelly, who's a base car driver, and his wife Marilyn. So my best wishes to the Collins family.
Thank you. We're adjourned.